Mr. McDormand, you may proceed, sir.
Thank you. Calls my first witness, Casey Gilfoyle.
We'll go ahead and swear you in if you would please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
For the record, state your name.
Casey Gilfoyle.
Mr. Gilfoyle, you are a teacher employed by this district, am I correct?
Yes.
What is your teaching position?
Eighth grade, early American history at Pleasantly Middle School.
How long have you been employed in this district?
Twenty-two years.
Now, you know Joe Oswald?
Yes.
Have you known Joe during your time here?
In multiple capacities over those twenty-two years. First as a co-teacher, teaching with him in the same building. And then I also coached with Joe a few years. And then for, gosh, fifteen years or so, as a varsity basketball coach, Joe was an official throughout the Kansas City area and did officiate many of our games.
Excluding the May 6 incident, I want to ask you, in the time that you've known Joe, have you observed his interaction with students in this district?
Yes.
Would that include both white, black, or any?
Yes.
Any nationality?
Yes.
Race? At any time, did you ever hear him refer to a student with a racial slur?
No.
All right, let's go to May 6, 2021. On that particular day, did you have occasion to see Joe Oswald?
Yes, because of COVID this year and when all the kids came back full-time, they had to still keep or try to keep as much social distancing as possible during lunch shifts. So, our school moved part of each lunch shift to the mezzanine in the gym to allow for that social distancing. So, they needed another lunchroom supervisor. So, I was the one that was up in the mezzanine. And on that particular day, Joe came up and I assumed just to say hi. And he was up there for five, ten minutes or so, and we were just talking about things.
And did an incident occur with a student during that time?
Yes, while I was toward the end of the lunch shift and I was releasing each individual table to go throw their lunch items away in the trash. And I've got tables, you know, this table, table two gets up, goes, throws their stuff away, they're coming back, table three, and that's what I do, just to prevent as many kids from being up and around as possible. Joe and I both heard another student say a racial slur toward another student. They were about ten, fifteen feet away from each other. Joe and I both turned around and saw the student who said that racial slur. And Joe told me, "You're busy, let me go take care of it." So, Joe went over to the student. And I'm still releasing tables and getting the kids ready for them to leave the mezzanine to go back to class. And then that's the last I see of Joe and this other student was at the end of the lunch shift. I'm releasing mine, I'm cleaning up the caf- or the mezzanine, and Joe has, I assume, taken the student to student administration.
Now, that particular student's referred to as Student A here, you understand?
Okay, yes.
You know who you're talking about?
Yes, Student A.
A female, black student?
Yes.
And prior to this incident occurring where you heard the student utter a racial slur, was there something else that she'd done that caused you to write up an additional?
Yes. As part of my job as lunchroom supervisor, I'm not just standing in one spot. I'm constantly moving around, the mezzanine is, if anybody of, any of you have been in the mezzanine, it's, you know, the whole length of the gym. And we've got kids from one end of the wall to the other and back over here. So, I'm constantly roving around the mezzanine during my lunch shift just to make sure that, you know, the kids are doing what they're supposed to. And earlier on in that same lunch shift on May 6th, Student A, I noticed, had walked left, stood up, left her table, and walked two tables over and was talking to some other students that were not at her table. With COVID and how the year has been, one of the rules at lunch is you stay in your seat until the lunchroom supervisor dismisses you to go throw your trash away or to leave. Or if you have a question and I'm at the other end of the mezzanine, you can, you know, come to me, ask your question if you need to use the restroom, go get a drink, go back to the cafeteria to buy something else. So, I make my way over to this student. I ask her, you know, "Can you please go back to your table?" She went back to her table. That happened toward the beginning of the lunch shift. Five, ten minutes later, Joe comes up, we're talking. I'm starting to release the tables to throw their stuff away. Student A stands up, yells a racial slur to this other student a couple tables away. And just like my previous story, Joe says, "I'll go take care of her." He went over, dealt with her. And then after I released the lunch tables to leave the cafeteria, the table that she had gone to earlier in the lunch shift, I had had those kids stay because I wanted to see what had happened or what occurred during the lunch shift earlier on. They told me that Student A, when she was over talking to them, she was talking to them in a threatening way. I believe, I wrote it on the discipline referral, I can't remember for sure what it said, but more to the effects of, "Quit looking at me or I'm going to slap you," something to that nature. And so, I released those four or five students, I can't remember how many there were. I released them to their class. And then I cleaned up the cafeteria, or the mezzanine, then went back to my classroom to write a discipline, an electronic discipline referral for Student A for the incident that occurred at the beginning of lunch.
You have on the table there a notebook, and it's got tabs in it. If you could turn to tab number four, please?
Yes.
All right. And I think you should have informed you, something that starts off to Deborah Del Sim.
Correct.
All right. And you'll notice at the bottom of that exhibit, it says Administration's Exhibit 4.
Yes.
And there's above that, LSR 70001.
Yes.
See that? I want you to go to this document where you find 0008.
I'm there.
All right. Now, are you familiar with the term green slip?
Yes.
What does that term mean to you?
When you've been around the school district as long as I have, before computers became prevalent, we wrote discipline referrals on a green document, about a half sheet of paper, and it was in triplicate form, I believe. So, you would rip it off, or you'd take it to the office or send the kid up, and then eventually you would get one of the copies in your mailbox. One would go to the student and one would be put in the student's file, I believe.
And this form that I'm seeing here, is that essentially the same as it's been in the years that you've had experience using green slips?
Yes, I still have a pile of green slips in my classroom for substitutes. So, I always have some left out for a substitute whenever I'm absent.
But otherwise, teachers have been assigned, I understand, laptops now?
Yes.
And in those laptops or on those laptops is an electronic version of this?
Yes.
Is it essentially the same?
Yeah, it's the same.
All right. Now, I don't know if you can read this or not, it's not very legible. But what's at issue here is, and I will relate to you if you don't know, that this document is in Joe Oswald's handwriting. So, I want you to assume that. And under the area that says, "Nature of Problem," can you read that first line?
"Stood up at lunch and yelled across mezzanine."
And can you go ahead and read what the next three words, if you can?
"To another girl."
And then do you see that there's quotation marks?
Yes.
And then do you see that there's a statement of that is related to this Student A's?
Yes, that's the statement that both Joe and I heard her say at the end of the lunch shift in the mezzanine on May 6th.
So, that's consistent with what you heard as well?
Correct.
All right. Now then, you've been doing green slips or student discipline referrals for over twenty years, is that correct?
Yes.
When you do one of this nature, or let me ask you this way, if I can, if this was you that took this A to the stat office that day, would you have done the green slip any differently than what Joe Oswald did?
No, I would have done it exactly as it is written here.
Now, have you received instruction, written or oral, as to filling out the green slips from Administration?
Over my career, the main thing that has been said to teachers by, you know, administrator after administrator, "Write everything down, make it as accurate as possible."
What about using the exact words?
I've been told over the years, "Write everything out," and that's what I do.
Exactly as you heard it?
Exactly as I heard it.
So, if this had been Casey, this instance, other than the handwriting might have been better?
I don't know about that, I've been told that. I remember once by a college professor, I had the worst handwriting they've ever seen, but I try to do better at that.
Now, are you aware of the fact that Joe read back to Student A the quotation here?
Yes.
How would you have handled that before May 6?
I would have done it exactly the way Joe did it.
Has that been your training?
Yeah, that's, I believe that is how we have been expected to handle green slips, discipline referrals. We try to make sure that everything is as accurate as possible. And if that means reading back the statement to the student, then that's what I do.
Do you do it that way any longer?
After this, I'm afraid I will not.
In fact, did you have an incident on May 21st? Or thereabout, sometime later May?
Do you have a copy of the referral possibly?
I don't. And I may be mistaken on that. Do you think context is important in filling out these discipline reports?
Yes, I do.
If you had written this out, as you've indicated you would have, exactly the same, would you consider that was your words using a racial slur?
No. I've written many green slips in my career, and when it comes to writing the statement that the student said, then I've put that in quotations.
Is it fair to say you're a witness at this point, you've witnessed something?
Yes.
And as a witness, you're giving your statement of what you believe you saw or heard, am I correct?
Yes.
Does this have anything to do with disrespecting the student?
Joe reading this to the student?
Yeah, or you reading it?
Objection, that calls for speculation.
Sustain.
All right. As to you reading this statement, would it be disrespectful?
No, I do not believe so. I was, if this was me, and I'm reading this back to the student to make sure that I had written down everything accurately, especially in the situation where we were in, where everybody had masks on, kids were getting up, going to the trash can, chairs were being moved on a concrete floor, I would want to make sure in this situation that I had everything written accurately, not only for my benefit, but for the students.
Thank you, I have no other questions, you may inquire.
Ms. Basie?
You testified that you heard one student in the mezzanine yelling a racial slur to another student, is that correct?
Yes.
Was that the N-word?
Yes.
So, do you consider the N-word to be a racial slur?
Yes.
Do you believe the N-word is offensive?
Yes.
When you wrote the referral that you wrote, that you submitted electronically regarding the prior incident in the mezzanine, did you check that information with any of the students before you submitted that referral?
I checked the information with the four student, four or five students that were at the table where Student A came over and spoke to. And because Student A was already in class at the time, and then I had a class, I just created the electronic referral for that situation. And then it would be up to the assistant principal to take care of that.
I have no additional questions.
Mr. McDormand, anything further?
Nothing further.
Board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Gilfoyle? Board member Sparks.
In your twenty-two-year career, have you ever had to write a student up for using the N-word?
I do not think so, not in my recollection as of now.
Okay. Do you know of any other teacher that have had to write up another student for using the N-word?
Yes.
And do you know what that process was, disciplining that student?
I do not.
Okay.
We're not really privy to discipline actions from other students and other teachers.
Board member Allen?
Yeah, just to clarify, if I'm reading the green slip correctly, right? On the third line down, is it? Is it you staring at me, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And then told me that, I can't read.
That blocked out is Student A's name.
Right, told me that the, you know what?
That she believed
Okay.
Student B had an issue with her and doesn't want her staring at her.
Okay. I have another question in regard to that, but I'm afraid it's more of a speculation sort of question, so I probably don't want to. Yeah. Okay, good, yeah, thanks.
Any further questions? Mr. Hadley, do you want to advise on?
Do either of you anticipate recalling this witness?
I think we're through with him.
All right. Sir, you're free to go, you can stay here and watch more of the hearing if you'd like, or you may go home.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Gilfoyle, thank you.
I'm sorry. Connerd, I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
He's up next, I apologize, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. McDormand, if you want to go ahead and officially call the witness?
Yes, I call Dustin Connerd.
Mr. Connerd, we will ask you to take an oath, please. If you'd raise your hand, you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Mr. Doctor Connerd, is that right?
I am, yes, just graduated in May.
Should have referred to you as that, I apologize, so.
What is your occupation?
I'm a special education teacher at Pleasantly Middle School.
How long have you been employed by this district?
Ten years.
You are familiar, are you not, with the events that give rise to why we're here tonight for Mr. Oswald's termination?
Yes, I do.
And are you aware of the fact that this basis for this termination is this handling of a student discipline issue?
Yes.
Are you familiar with what a green slip is?
I am.
What is that?
A green slip is a piece of paper, I don't know, about six inches, has a green, white, and pink sheet, and they get ripped off and put into student files, and one gets sent home with the student. I haven't written one of those in a very long time.
I understand now that the staff utilizes an electronic version?
Yes, ERs, yes.
But is it essentially the same as a good old green slip?
It is.
Now, are you aware of the claim, and there's no dispute as to it, that on May 6th, in processing the student for using the N-word in the mezzanine in the building, that Mr. Oswald took her to the office and filled out the green slip? And if, I'm asking you to, on that booklet there, if you can turn to tab four?
I'm there.
And if you'll turn at the bottom, it has numbers. You can see like an LSR 7000?
Yes.
Turn to 008, if you would.
008?
Yes. And I believe you should be on a page that has a very poor copy of that green slip.
It is a very poor copy, yes.
All right. Now, I will represent to you that that document is a green slip that Joe Oswald filled out that day. And if you'll look at the nature of the problem, do you see that part? It's in black. On the very left, it's probably the first word, like the third line down.
On the actual green slip itself?
Yes, itself, all right.
Nature of the problem, yes.
And that's a printed form, as far as I can tell.
Right.
And then Joe has stated the nature of the problem in his handwriting, do you see that?
I do.
And you see that there's quotation marks, you see that?
I do.
And can you read, I'm not asking you to read it out loud, but can you read what's stated there?
Yes, I can.
There is the first word, we've been utilizing N-word. Why are you staring at me? Do you see that?
I do.
All right. Now, when you fill out a green slip, do you ever quote exactly, if it's an issue of something said verbally, do you ever quote what the individual is, you believe, said?
I do.
So, if Joe Oswald said he heard the student say that, if you put yourself in his shoes, would you have written this out the same as he did?
If I was in the room, I would write down exactly what they said.
Now, once you've done that, would you, would you in any respect converse with the student to confirm the accuracy of this statement?
I would, I want to make sure that I get it right on the green slip.
Would that include saying verbatim?
Correct, yes.
Why is that important?
Well, you want to make sure that you get the green slip right, you don't want to put words in their mouth. And you want to make sure that administrators, once they get that green slip, they know exactly what the student said.
Are you familiar with the term BIST?
I am.
Tell me what that means to you.
It's a Behavior Intervention Support System.
And? I'm not a teacher, so explain to me what that means.
Well, basically, you have like rings. And it's basically a system used to utilize other teachers' rooms, process with the student before we send them on referrals to the office.
Is the BIST program to find a better way to communicate with students?
It's about building relationships and communicating with students, yes.
So, when, do you utilize that training in filling out these green slips?
Absolutely. I did BIST training last summer with Joe and several other teachers because that's the direction that the school wants to go to.
Knowing what you know about this, is there anything that Joe did that you would have done any differently of A6?
Absolutely not. The premise of BIST is to make sure that the students own up to what they did, either with their behavior or their language. And you can't get there without them getting the language that they said on paper and verifying that with the student.
Have you ever been told that you are not to say a racial slur out loud?
Never.
In the past, have you processed discipline problems where there's been profanity or slurs?
Yes.
And in those instances, did you write the profane word out?
Word for word, in quotation marks.
And the racial slur?
Everything.
Did you consider those to be your words or the words of the student that you're processing?
The words of the student, so that they can own up to that, that language.
Now, since the situation has come up with Joe, were you presented with any type of incident that caused you to change your method?
Yes, I had a green slip that I wrote the second to last day of school.
And about what date would that have been?
The 26th, I think.
And did you follow the process that you'd been doing in the past ten years of repeating?
So, the green slip that I wrote, the student used the N-word, and I actually just put N-word on the green slip because of what happened to Joe.
But before what happened to Joe, that's not how you would have done?
That's not how I would have done it at all.
You may inquire.
Whoops, sorry, Ms. Basie?
So, are you saying that you would have also read the N-word out loud, you would have repeated the N-word out loud back to the student?
Yes, I would.
Is part of BIST also using caring language with students?
It is.
And do you consider the N-word a caring word?
It is not.
I have no further questions.
Mr. McDormand?
No, you direct.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Board member Sparks?
So, you stated that you have wrote or disciplined a student for using racial slur before, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you also stated that you would have, that you did repeat the word back?
I have never, I have I have never, um, I have never had to write for the N-word before, um, but ra, like, different types of slurs, cuss words, things like that, it didn't happen until after Joe's incident that this happened.
So you're saying that you have never wrote a student up for using a racial slur?
For slurs, yes. Just not the N-word.
So yes, slurs. You have-
Yes.
-written a student up for using a racial slur?
Yes.
And you have repeated that word, or that slur, back to that student while you were processing the write-up?
I have.
And in the write-up, are you stating that you repeated the word to the student?
I'm putting it in quotation marks.
And?
Like, I'm conferencing with the student.
In confirmation of what the student said, are you repeating what the student said?
I am repeating what the student said, yes.
And are you stating that on the write-up?
Correct.
That you repeated-
That I repeated this, to verify what they said.
And you were never disciplined?
I was never disciplined.
Do you know how many times that may have happened?
Uh, I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Board member, Board Member Campbell?
Let's tag on Board Member Sparks's question. Um, I think I heard you say-
Is your mic on?
It's on, I'll speak up. I, I think I understood you to say, uh, the same would be true of profanity?
Yes, with profanity.
If the student used profanity, you would write the, the word?
I would write it out on the green slip, and then repeat it back to the student, to verify that they said what they said.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions from board members? Okay. Mr. Hatley?
Do either of you, uh, anticipate calling Dr. Connor back?
No, he can be released, as far as I'm concerned.
Uh, Dr. Connor, you are free to go, or you may stay here and observe the rest of the hearing, if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Connor.
Kim Bergstrasser will be my next witness.
Okay. Is somebody going to get her?
I hope. It's going where she is, I think.
We gotta make this process quicker. I don't know if you got someone that can prompt him and have him ready, cause we need to- Don't do that, if you can. Jason's next, and he should be-
My next witness is present, Kim Bergstrasser.
Good evening. We will go ahead and swear you in at this time, okay? Ms. Bergstrasser, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Ms. Bergstrasser, uh, what is your occupation?
A special education teacher.
For this district?
Correct.
How long have you been employed by this district?
Twenty-five years.
You know Joe Oswald?
Correct.
You've known him during the entire twenty-five years?
Correct.
You are the special ed teacher, is that?
Yes.
Erin, in the course of your teaching, are you, have you ever had occasion to have to do a discipline notice report?
Yes.
If you open up the, that notebook that's there, and turn to tab four.
Okay.
And if you look at the bottom, at the bottom right, there's the letters LSR seven, do you see that?
The bottom right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you turn to the page that has oh 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 eight, three Os and an eight?
Yes.
Alright. At the very top of that page, it's not a very good copy, but there, it says scanned copy of green slip. Do you see that?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the term green slip?
Yes.
What is a green slip?
Um, it's commonly referred to as like a discipline referral. It's kind of like the old form that we used to use before we moved on to the electronic form.
Is the electronic form essentially the same as this document?
I, I believe so, yes.
Alright. Have you had occasion to have to, either electronically or the old way, uh, fill out green slips?
Yes.
And are there times when you are, as part of that, filling it out, where the term nature of problem is, which is printed, do you see that?
Yes.
Would you fill out whatever that problem might be, that you're referring the student for?
Yes, I can't read really the last-
I understand.
There's some words that I can't read, but yes. I see, yes.
Alright, now, when you fill out a green slip, do you communicate with the student?
Yes, I do.
Do you, do you read back to them the words that you put down?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever been told not to say a racial slur out loud?
No.
And you've been in this district thirty years, is that right?
I've been in Lee Summit District twenty-five. I was in a different district for five years before that.
Now, have you had occasion to observe Joe's interaction with the students?
Yes.
With respect to minority students, have you observed his interaction with them?
Um, yes. And I believe it was in the month of April, there was a day that I, um, was struggling with, um, a student, and the student was very argumentative. Um, I'd gotten an email stating from an administrator to say, this one particular student, do not let them out in the hall. This particular student, we have like e-hall passes, so we can kind of monitor how often kids are out in the hall, saying, this student is out in the hall too much, please do not, it, it went to all his teachers, but do not let him out in the hall unless it's been approved as an electronic hall pass. So we, this student came to homeroom, which is at the end of the day, and, um, the student came in and said, can I go to the choir room? And I said, let me check to see if there's an electronic pass. I checked, there wasn't. Um, he was very upset, and he said, the reason I would not let him go was because he was black. Um, I took him out in the hall, I tried to process with him, let's talk about this. I said, I got this email, this is the directive from my boss, um, you've had too many, um, hall passes out, and so I have to follow the directive of my boss. He really had trouble with that, with owning that behavior. Um, so then by chance, a para was walking by, and I said, he's struggling right now, and I don't feel like he's comfortable to go back into the classroom. Is it possible that you take him downstairs and talk to the administrator that told me that he should not leave? Cause he was making comments such as, I'm gonna fail and it's your fault, cause I wouldn't let him go get help. So they go down there, the office checks, he did not have an electronic pass, and so this one administrator said, no, he's not allowed to go, cause it was not pre-approved. They bring him back up, then there was an announcement on the intercom saying, if you're interested in attending a football meeting, um, please come to this location. And he said, well, can I go to that? I said, we've been instructed that you are not to be out in the hall. I'm sorry. He was upset, we went out in the hall. Once again, I said to the para, take him down, because I have this homeroom of twenty-some kids, and I, he's pretty wound up. Um, she took him down, quickly brought him back up. They said, no, he's not allowed to go. He was very upset, he was in the hallway, saying that there's, um, he felt like it was because he was black. Um, so he was struggling. Just by chance, Mr. Oswald walks by, and I said, Mr. Oswald, if you don't mind, could you just step in as a witness? I just need some support here. I wasn't, I felt like we weren't getting where we needed to go. So, uh, Mr. Oswald stepped in, immediately started off with a positive conversation. Hey buddy, you know, when you first got here, he was new to our school, you had some great things. I was so proud of you, uh, you were doing what you were told, the expectations, you understood what to do, you followed directives, and just lately, I feel like we're struggling. Let's talk about that. And he was like, no, you don't understand, it's because I'm black. And Coach Oswald was like, let's talk about the behavior, let's bring it back to the behavior. What did you do? So he, in my opinion, he diffused the situation, definitely helped me out, which I appreciated. Um, and then the bell rang to dismiss, to go home, and we both said, do you feel comfortable, are you at a safe place that you can get on the bus and go home? He said, yeah, yeah. So we just reassured him. If you do not feel safe, we will make sure that you get a ride home. We want you to feel safe getting on the bus and going forward. He said, yes, he was fine. That ended, and at that time, after school, I was still bothered by it, because he was not happy. He felt like possibly he was being, being mistreated. And so I went to, um, an administrator, and I said, I brought the para as well, and I said, I feel like this student left, and I feel like we didn't have good closure. And so I'm, I'm concerned. I think we need to, I feel like we need to process more. We called the mom, this administrator handled it very well. We called his mother, got her on speakerphone, talked to her about the situation, and she was very supportive of the school, um, which was a great processing moment. Um, then, I then looked at the administrator and I said, I'm gonna be really honest with you, we need training. I said, when a student says that, I need to know what I should say. How should I handle that situation? When someone looks at me and says, there's teachers in this building that, they're telling me stuff, it's because I'm black, or another comment he made to my para was, you can't tell me not to talk, I'm not your slave. I mean, so when people make these comments, we felt like, um, it was just, we weren't getting anywhere. And so I said to this administrator, we need training, we need directives, how do we handle it? What do we say? Where do we process? What, we need directives. And I, and that administrator said, you're right.
In your time that you've known Joe Oswald, have you ever heard him use a racial slur against any student?
No.
I have no other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions for this witness? Board Member Sparks?
Are you at Pleasantly Middle?
Yes.
The, um, I believe, um, Dr. Sharp, he stated that there was, um, training and some things that he was making available to all staff. Was you able to take advantage of any of that training?
Um, I'm, the training, I've done the, um, the Safe Schools videos, and that was last year. Um, the additional training, there was one thing that I believe it was, I think we had someone come in, it was the Harvard test of biases, um, and so that was something that we did participate in. It's like you answered questions, and then sometimes I would rephrase the questions to see if you would answer consistently, and it kind of came up with a score to see if you were biased toward a specific group.
But being able to purchase any materials that he was willing to purchase for you, was you able to take advantage of any of that?
I am unaware of that.
Okay.
I do not recall that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions from board members? Okay. Mr. Hatley? Unless counsel's having anybody in, so. Sorry, I was just making an assumption, I apologize.
I don't have any other questions, I'm sorry. I have no reason to keep her, I would ask that she be released.
Same with you, Ms. Basie?
No objection to her being released.
Thank you. Ms. Bergstrasser, you're free to go, or you may remain and watch more of the hearing.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know who Jason Wright is?
I do know Jason Wright.
Could you tell him he's next?
Yes, thank you.
About what? Oh, about that. Yeah, Nicole you were talking about, I thought you said, sorry, I thought you said Monty. Okay, yeah, I mean, that's-
Mr. McD, Mr. McDormand, uh, just a quick question, this doesn't need to be on the record. Is there a way, and obviously, I don't want to take anybody away who's, who's working with you, is there a way to maybe have the next witness on deck a little closer?
Yeah, I, uh, let's do this. My next one is, is Nikki. Let's go ahead and, if, if maybe one of the officers can, my next one's gonna be Nikki Stanley, if they can bring her down and keep her over here out of the hearing, I'll be glad to do that.
Dr. Andrews there will be our designated witness fetcher tonight.
Do that, and I'll keep telling you, the next one's gonna be, we'll keep it moving that way.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Wright.
Good evening.
Uh, we'll go ahead and get you sworn in here as a witness.
Absolutely.
Please raise your hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you, honor. Mr. Preston. It's getting to be late, obviously.
That's a first, I have to admit.
Old, old habits die hard.
Don't let it go to your head, like these other guys do. Jason, what's your occupation?
Teaching coach for Lee Summit Public Schools, Pleasantly Middle School, coach at Lee Summit High School.
How long have you been employed in this district?
One year.
Prior to this time, have you been employed anywhere in the educational field?
Absolutely.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So this, I just completed my twenty-seventh year. Um, started off at, um, Joplin High School for a year, went to Springfield Parkview for two years, um, really found my home in Columbia Hickman for sixteen years, and then moved to, took a journey to Illinois. Um, I was at Normal Community High School, Evans Junior High for ten years in Bloomington, Illinois.
You know Joe Oswald?
Absolutely.
Uh, do you two work together at all in coaching or anything?
We sure do. Um, Joe and I met, um, I would say probably in March of two thousand twenty, um, when I first learned that I was gonna be employed by Lee Summit Public Schools and, and coaching football at, um, Lee Summit High School. In fact, he was the first one to reach out to me in terms of, hey, glad you're on board, let's get together. In fact, uh, side note, he, uh, was willing to drive from, uh, Lee Summit to Bloomington, Illinois, just to speak with his new defensive coordinator, which, that was impressive to me.
Have you observed his interaction with students?
Absolutely. Uh, I found Joe, um, immediately found Joe to be a guy that is genuine, is caring, um, is a hard worker, loves kids, loves all types of kids, um, is a very good coach. Um, I just can't, I, I don't have enough good adjectives to say about the guy. I mean, I, I just, he's a model citizen. I look up to him, I respect what he does, and, um, he's, he's, he's a super person in terms of character and integrity.
Have you observed his interaction with minority students?
Absolutely. And, um, you know, Joe's a guy that, uh, does not see color. Absolutely. And, um, you know, Joe's a guy that, uh, does not see color. Uh, I think when you're a coach in any sport or a teacher, you don't see color. You see kids. And, um, Joe's the type of guy that will give, uh, the kids his shirt off his back. And he goes the extra mile to help kids in any sport, whether it's football or track.
Have you ever seen him utter a racial slur?
Absolutely not.
You're aware of the fact that he was suspended and the purpose of this hearing is a termination hearing to terminate him as a teacher at this district?
Objection to the term suspension. I think that's a, has a legal meaning that's not here. Administrative leave.
Sorry, administrative leave.
You need to, you need a question to be asked, Mr. Wright.
Now, are you aware that this administrative leave centered around his processing a student for discipline issue?
I am.
Now, I think that's already open and that's helpful. I think in front of you is Exhibit Four and at the bottom, you should see an LSR seven dash zero zero eight. Do you see that?
Correct.
Right. At the top of that page, do you recognize that as a very poor copy of a green slip?
Yes, I do.
Now, you are a first-year teacher, just completed your first year.
That is correct.
Did you receive any specific training on how to fill this green slip out?
I did not.
Were you ever told that if you used a racial slur in one of these green slips, you were not to repeat that out loud?
I was never told that.
Jason? If you had heard the student yell a racial slur across the mezzanine and you were asked to process her for this, would you have written verbatim what you heard her say in this report?
Absolutely.
Would you read it back to her after you wrote it?
Absolutely. In fact, in twenties, twenty-seven years, I've been in four districts, to be honest with you. I've always written her the referral and read it back because I've always said, "I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I'm gonna repeat this back." And does this sound hundred percent accurate to the student?
Even if it was the N-word, since you're a black person?
Even if it was the N-word.
I have no other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions? Board Member Sparks?
So my question is, have you ever, um, written up a student for a racial slur?
I have not. In fact, I, I haven't written a lot of referrals. Probably in twenty-seven years, I've probably written ten, ten referrals, fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Wright, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you were essentially in the onboarding process for our district as a new teacher, was there any reference made in those, in the new teacher training to the referral process?
To be honest with you, um, there was a, there was a lot that was thrown at me because I was a, a new teacher and I don't recall that topic being brought up.
Appreciate the answer. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused.
Yes, he may.
All right. Mr. Wright, you are free to go or you may remain and observe more of the hearing if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
And Matt Six, Sisk would be the witness after Stanley. Trying to keep this moving.
Ms. Stanley, thank you for being here this evening.
Indeed.
Um, we are gonna go and swear you in as a witness, so if you could please raise your right hand, please. I'll be the one doing it. So the Joe, who you're looking at, sorry. Uh, "Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?"
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McDorman?
Thank you. Ms. Stanley, are you employed by this district?
I am.
How long have you been employed by this district?
As a teacher, eighteen years.
Uh, have you received any type of awards in that period of time?
I have. Would you like me to describe it?
I think in twenty twenty, you received an award, didn't you?
I did.
What was that for?
Yeah, it was, um, the Excellence in Teaching Award. I was one of the finalists for Teacher of the Year.
I'm sure that's quite an honor.
Yes, I don't usually say that out loud, so that feels a little awkward, but yes.
And what exactly is your teaching role at the district?
Um, I am a speech and theater teacher at PLMS.
Are you familiar with the student discipline procedure in this district?
Yes.
I use the term green slip. What does that mean to you?
Um, the paper form of our discipline referral.
Has that evolved to an electronic form?
It has.
Objection that this is becoming cumulative. She's like the fourth or fifth person now to testify about the green slip.
I, I, I think under state law, we're required to hear, uh, every witness that the, uh, teacher wants to call. So, uh, I'll overrule the objection. Uh, Mr. McDorman?
I've been keeping every witness very short.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Now, in front of you is Exhibit Four and it should be turned at the very bottom. It should say LSR seven dash zero zero eight. Do you see that?
I don't have my readers, but yes, I believe we're on the right page. Yes.
All right. And there's a very poor copy of a green slip if you're on the right page. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right. Now, when you process a student for a discipline notice, where you'd fill out the green slip and you're basing it on something they've said, how do you handle that? How do you put, use this form?
Procedureally on this paper? Is that what you're asking me? Um, I, I know that our policy is to write it exact, write the infraction exact with as much detail as possible.
When you say our policy, are you referring to the district or to your building?
Building. And I probably should use the words best practice.
All right.
I'm not quoting anything specific.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I, just, our best practice is, um, specific details, as much details as possible. I've been told before to attach a piece of paper if I needed to, staple a piece of paper. Um, and, you know, obviously clarity and accuracy are paramount. Um, we've been told, you know, we don't investigate. We simply report what we know to the fullest extent possible.
And that by we, is that by the administration of the building?
Yes.
All right. So, when you do fill this out, if you're quoting a student, how do you handle that? Do you read it back to them?
Uh, typically, yes. It depends on where I'm at in the processing with that student. If I've, you know, if it's after the fact or if it's before the fact, reading what I understood to be accurate.
Have you ever been told in the time that you've been employed by this district, not to say certain words?
Never.
And rather than being, being around racial slurs, have you been told not to repeat those?
Never.
Have you observed Joe's Oswald's interaction with students?
Yes.
Have you ever seen him utilize a racial slur?
No. No.
I have no other questions.
I have no questions.
Board members, do you have any questions? Board Member Hedrick?
I do have one quick question. In terms of, um, process, um, on the green slip or the discipline referral, um, have you had occasion where, um, after you've completed this and it's been reviewed by whoever the appropriate administrator is, that, um, they come back to you for additional questions or clarification? Or is it pretty much, once it's submitted, you're done?
It kind of depends. Um, I think I've seen both scenarios that you just described happen, especially if there's a, a bit of a he said, she said that starts up.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I, I do try to be thorough, though.
Board Member Sparks?
Hello. I know that you noticed, um, that you stated that it depends on where you are on how you would kind of process, um, with a student and confirmation of what a student might have said.
Right.
Um, so I have two questions. The first question is, have you ever had to write a student up, um, for using a racial slur?
Yes.
Okay. And did you repeat that back to that student, what that student said?
Um, the specific time that comes to my mind, um, I honestly don't know with regard to the student. I immediately got an administrator. Um, it was important, the wording was important specifically in that situation. Um, and I'm gonna sound very cryptic here, so bear with me. The student was not using a, the N-word, quote unquote. The student was saying the term. I was telling, actually, let me back up. The student was saying the R-word. Do I need to clarify that word?
I believe you do.
I mean, I, I'd rather not. And the whole scenario made me uncomfortable.
I don't, I don't need you to clarify.
Nually disabled?
Yeah. Yep. Yes. And, um, that student was using that term. And I had to explain that that's not, um, that's not a term we use anymore. And I said, um, "You can say the R-word if you need to, but you're using that as an, as an adjective and that's not okay in here." And so then I said, and they said, "What, you can't use that word?" I said, "No. We, you can say the R-word if you feel like you need to refer to it." I said, "You know, we don't say the N-word anymore." And that erupted into the fact that, that, that student then accused me of equating the two terms. Again, I, I know I'm being cryptic and that's why I had to say that term to an administrator so the administrator had the full scope of what had happened in that scenario. Did that make any sense?
It did.
Okay.
So then as a follow-up question, would you have repeated that word if another student was present outside of the one that you was disciplining? So, in, in your, in your statement, you said that it would depend on the circumstances or you said it would depend on, um, the setting, um, while you were processing a write-up, correct?
Sure.
Okay. And so if you were disciplining a student, because you said you have had to for the R-word, if you-
And the N-word, if we're being consistent here.
Okay. Or the, and the N-word. So you've had to discipline bo, both.
That was the same infraction, in the same incident.
Okay. Would you have, if you did repeat the word back, because you said you're unsure if you did or not, right?
I mean, I know that I had to describe that scenario in detail to an administrator. Um...
With the student, did you confirm what the student said?
Yes. I mean, immediately, the, I had the administrator with me describing what happened with the student.
Okay. And would you have done that in, in front of another student that was not being disciplined?
Well, I mean, if I'm actively processing with that student, um, my objective is to, to hand that off as quickly as possible to the administrator. I mean, I don't know that I would necessarily, I don't know. I think that's hypothetical. I-
I'm sorry. I guess, I guess the question that I'm asking is, would you have discreetly addressed that student and disciplined them? Would, if there was another student present, would you have removed that student and dealt with that write-up? Or would you have dealt with it right there with another student present?
Well, I think best practice when we can is to communicate discreetly with the child, but what you're asking is a very hypothetical situation.
Okay. Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused.
I have a question.
I apologize, Ms. Basie.
You were uncomfortable and said you'd rather not say the R, R-word here. Is that correct? But you're saying that you did say that word and the N-word back to the student out loud, using the full words when talking to that student about what happened?
Um, yes. Thank you. And I don't even know how long ago that was, but yeah.
Anything further from councils?
Yeah, just briefly, with, with respect to disciplining a student, it can't always be done one-on-one, can it? I mean, it'd be something in the classroom you're still in charge of.
Right. I mean, sometimes it's very immediate and you, you, you kind of have to make that, that decision on the fly. I mean, that's probably seventy percent of what teaching is. It's just trying to do your best at, at any given moment, so. Yes. I mean, I know what best practice is and I, I observed that.
All right. I have nothing further.
Any further questions? Okay, now, Mr. Hatley.
Thank you very much. She may be excused.
Ms. Basie?
She may be excused.
You, you're free to leave. You may remain if you'd like. It's your choice.
After Matt? Yeah. After Matt. Matt Sisk should be the next one.
Good evening, Mr. Sisk.
Good evening.
I'm gonna swear you in here. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDorman?
You are occupa, or you are, you are employed by this district?
Yes, sir.
What is your position?
Eighth grade history teacher at Pleasantly Middle School and also track coach at PLMS. And then this year, currently football coach at Lee Summit High School.
And that's been for nineteen years? Am I correct?
I have been with this district, I'm going into my eighth year in this district.
Where did you teach before this?
Uh, Independence, Missouri.
You know Joe Oswald?
Absolutely.
Have you, uh, coached with him?
Yes, sir.
And you're, you teach history, am I correct?
I do.
And is that for a certain grade level?
Eighth grade. Mm-hmm.
Now, open in front of you is Exhibit Four. You'll see at the bottom, it has the letters LSR, the number seven dash zero zero eight. Do you see that?
Yes.
Right. So we're in the same place on this exhibit. At the top is a, is a poor copy of, of a green slip. Do you see that?
Yes, sir.
What does the term green slip mean to you?
Uh, green slip is the procedural, um, the procedure that we take when kids have had, uh, a discipline issue. And it's how we go about reporting that discipline issue to STAD, which is the Student Administration, where our assistant principals will then see that and handle that.
Now, with respect to filling out this, this document, um, when you are filling out a referral where you are utilizing as part of the discipline notice where a student has said something such as a racial slur, uh, how would you put that in, in this document?
So, in the eight years that I have been at PLMS, uh, or seven years, soon to be eight, uh, we have always been instructed to fill it out word for word, just as we heard it. Uh, even the nasty stuff, so. And when we have students, uh, I also work up in STAD, um, as an assistant principal when the assistant principals are gone. And when kids come in and fill out confidential reports, reporting incident- And when kids come in and fill out confidential reports, reporting incidents with other students, so basically kids telling on other kids, we instruct them to do the exact same. They write every word, word-for-word, completely.
Including racial slurs?
I have never been in a situation where a kid has had to report that, but we have them write out every other terrible word that is said, known to man. So I would imagine that that would certainly be written as well.
And so when you say you've never had that, it's simply, it's not presented itself?
Correct.
If it would, would there be a reason for you to change your policy with respect to that?
That is how I was instructed to fill out green slips, and that is also how I was instructed to process with kids who came into STAD. So I cannot imagine that I would do anything different than what Joe Oswald did.
And you've seen this both from the staff standpoint and administrative standpoint, is that correct?
Correct.
Have you ever heard any of the other administrators tell any staff member, "Don't say a racial slur out loud"?
Never.
Were you told that?
Never.
Have you received any training, either in your role as a, as an administrator or as a staff member, as to what you should or should not say on these green slips?
The only training that I have ever received was probably in my first two or three years at PL, and that was informing me that since I had not written out word-for-word what was said, that I needed to correct that and write those words into the referral. And so that, that was the only training I had, was when I'd messed it up and done it wrong, when in fact they told me to write them out, even though I would write F-bomb instead of the entire word. And, and again, that's, that's the way we instruct our students when they come in to fill out confidential reports as well.
I have no other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I have no questions.
Board members, do you have any questions for this witness? Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused?
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Sisk, you are free to stay or leave, your choice.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
Yeah. Mr. Murdock?
Yes, sir.
I have one more witness that will, that is in the, on the faculty. And then I have some witnesses with respect to their experience with Mr. Oswald. I would like to suggest, I don't know where we are in break, is maybe take this one more witness and then give me a, a short break so I can talk to them. I think we've got three witnesses in that respect, so it will be short.
So, so you want to do one and then do your last three after a quick break? Is that, am I hearing that right? Did I not hear that right? I apologize, Dave.
I'm just thinking, take a break, or we could take the break right now, it's whatever you want.
We can go ahead and do, we can go and do your next one here, since we know that they're already down here.
Yeah, we could do that. And then if we take the break, I know that when we come back, I've got three witnesses, and I will be putting Mr. Oswald.
Okay.
Would then conclude our evidence.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, let's go ahead and do one more.
I'm sorry, we do have more than that. Maybe more than three, but it's not gonna be many more than that.
And this is Ms. Kendall, right?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall, would you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McDormand.
You are employed by this district?
Yes.
What is your position?
I am the girls' PE teacher at Pleasantly Middle School and department head.
How long have you been in this district?
Excuse me, could you speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry, I've been in the district for twenty-two years. I've been at Pleasantly for twenty.
I open in front of you is exhibit four. You'll see at the bottom of that document, there's LSR seven dash zero zero eight. Do you see that? Very bottom.
Yes.
Right. Just want to confirm we're on the same documents, why I'm asking you that. At the top of that is a, a scanned copy of a green slip. Do you see that?
Yes.
Now, are you familiar with the term green slip?
Yes.
What does that mean to you?
It's a disciplinary referral in which there's usually three layers. The top one is green, and then I think white and yellow. It's where we write down what a student has done, that we are disciplining them for, and process with them, and then we turn it into student administration. After they discipline the student, they separate the pages, and they give it back to us to let us know what the consequences were.
Have you received instruction as to how to fill these out?
I've re, I've been told to write exactly what the, the student said, word-for-word, and I've been told to repeat that to them and make sure that what I said is accurate. And then I check the conference box, so that when I turn that into student administration, they know that there's been a conference with that student, and that student has agreed to what is on that slip based upon me reading it back to them.
Have you ever been told not to say racial slurs if it's part of your statement?
In the twenty years that I've been in the district, I have never been told that there are words that are off limits, that I am never to write or say any specific word.
Are you familiar with the term BIST?
Yes.
What does that term mean to you?
We did training on it last summer. It is a, a way to possibly cut down on immediate discipline referrals by allowing us to have a buddy room for minor fractions such as maybe a student being disrespectful, or, um, nothing major, but it's just a step where they can go to a buddy room and process. And then before they come back to us, we would conference so that they could acknowledge what they did or said, so that we could maybe work on changing their behavior and helping them out.
Have you had occasion through the years to observe Mr. Oswald's interaction with students?
Yes, I coached track with him for, I believe, six or seven seasons, and I've worked along his side for ten years.
Have you ever seen him utter a racial slur towards any student?
Never.
I have no other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board members. Board member Sparks?
Hello, I have two questions. The first question is, you stated in your testimony that there are two, that someone instructed you on to write out exactly verbatim, but then also to repeat it. Can you tell me who is it that instructed you?
I can tell you, well, I can just tell you that I've had six diff, different vice principals. Early on, I, I don't recall when, I was told that I need to say the exact words on the green slip so that a student is very well aware of what they said. So, in my experience, I have had to, I like to say I disassociate myself with those words, and anytime I've read a green slip back to a student, I, I help them understand, I am reading your words. When I get to the inappropriate word, I will say, "You said", quote, and I will read them that word. I will give them an opportunity to tell me yes or no, and if they say, "No, I didn't say that", well, what did you say? And I will add additional information to the green slip. And that, that's just, I've never been told to do it any differently, so anytime I've had to conference with a student, I have read it word-for-word back to them.
Just to be clear, I just want to make sure I understand correctly, that you're, you're saying that you were trained to write verbatim word-for-word?
Write verbatim word-for-word and put in quotes exactly what they said, whether it was an offensive, inappropriate, whatever that word was, it needed to be exact. That it left no room for doubt as to what was said between me and the student, and the student and the administrator.
And to repeat.
And to repeat, yes.
And, and so you're saying the vice principals are the ones that instructed you to do that?
I honestly can't recall. I've, I've been there for twenty years, and I can tell you I've never been told not to do that, and I have done it multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Fritchie?
Yes, Ms. Kendall. You described the BIST process, and you said buddy room, and work the process, and a conference to help change behavior, okay? What's the processing piece? How does that work with BIST?
I honestly did not have to use it much this year. The process, the processing piece from my understanding is that the student would be able to write down possibly what they did wrong, and, and they would conference with me so that I could, if, if they used inappropriate behavior towards another student, we could discuss that and might come up with other solutions, or if they got frustrated in a game and their anger. My understanding is that is a way for me to build a relationship with that student, and to help them come up with other options that would be more healthy way to handle different situations.
Thank you.
Board member Marshall?
Thank you. Just an additional clarifying question, Ms. Kendall. You just said that you were told to say the exact word when you were engaging in a disciplinary matter. My question is, is that the only way that you were told to clarify whatever the incident was you were providing discipline for?
Yes, I have never been told to do anything differently.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councils, further questions?
I have one question. In, with respect to the BIST, you mentioned that one, one aspect of, of BIST is to build relationships with students, is that correct?
Yes.
Is part of that also using caring communication?
Yes.
Do you consider the use of racial slurs to be caring communication?
If it's coming out of my mouth and my thoughts, definitely not. If I'm put in a position where I've been told to read something back to a student, no, it's not a caring word, but I'm doing what I've been told to do.
Thank you.
Mr. McDormand?
Context is important, isn't it?
Context is definitely important.
No other questions?
Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused?
Yes, she may be excused.
Yes.
Ma'am, you're free to leave, or you may remain.
I do have one, I'm sorry, one other question. You're the seventh staff member that I've called here. Are there other staff members that have been trained exactly like you?
Objection, that calls for speculation.
Sustained.
Are you aware of other teachers besides the ones that these seven have been called?
Objection, that calls for speculation.
Sustained.
Pardon? No further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall, for being here, appreciate it. We will take a break, Mr. McDormand, okay? Let's try to keep it as short as possible. Let's start with five minutes and see if we can get everybody back, if that-
That's fine, and I'll try to have you an update on how many more.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's fine. I can come find you here in just a second, too. I appreciate it.
Everybody take their seats, please. Board members, are we ready to resume? Okay. Is it Mr. Cheadle, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and swear in. If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear and, or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
I live in Dallas, Texas. In a heartbeat.
Hold on, I'm getting-
There, is that better?
Yeah.
I apologize. I need to repeat.
Yeah, please start again.
All right. We'll start all over. Where are you from?
I live in Dallas, Texas.
And you are here to speak on behalf of Mr. Oswald?
Yes, sir.
Did you come here on your own volition?
In a heartbeat.
And at your own expense?
Yes, sir.
Logan, what do you currently do?
I'm a district sales coordinator for AFLAC.
What's your relationship to this district?
My relationship is that I grew up in this district.
And did you go K through twelve here?
I started in first grade in the Lee Summitt School District, and graduated as a senior at Lee Summitt West High School.
And from there, you went on to college, is that right?
Yep, got a full ride scholarship to the University of Missouri, played football.
Now, what was your relation, how did you come to become acquainted with your, with Coach Oswald?
I met Coach Oswald when I was in eighth grade, through the strength and conditioning program at Lee Summitt West High School, going into my freshman year, training for football. And Coach O began to be my position coach throughout high school, as he coached the defensive backs for our football team.
So how long have you known Coach Oswald?
Since then, since eighth grade.
And you're how old today?
Twenty-five years old.
In the time that you were involved with him as a, either a student, his class, or certainly as a, uh, someone that on one of the athletic teams that he was coaching, did you ever hear him say a racial slur?
No. In the time I was involved with Coach O, it's not just then, it's been all the way up through now, and never heard anything of that kind.
Did you consider him more than a coach to you?
Yes. I considered Coach O a lot more than a coach to me. I considered him somebody that continued to invest in me off the field. He saw me as more than just an athlete, more than just a student. Coach O's been there for me through the toughest time in my life, and continued to stay in touch with me after I left Lee Summitt West High School. And has been very intentional about it. I would say he's a lot more than just a coach.
Now, are you aware of the fact that the administration of this district is seeking his termination?
Aware and furious.
You understand the facts of, of this case?
Very well.
You understand that, that on May sixth, he used a racial slur, or said it twice out loud?
Yes, I understand. He confirmed his statement, yes.
You're a black person.
I am.
You know what was said, the word, you, don't you, this, the exact word. You, you've seen that document, or I've talked to you about it, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's racist, isn't it?
In what context?
If you, if I called you that.
Yes.
Is context important?
Very.
Do you understand the context in which he said this was to quote a student that had used that phrase against another student, or that word, I'm sorry?
I do understand that that was the context. It was used, which is again why I'm furious.
And why are you furious?
Because Joe Oswald is being terminated for something that I don't believe to be wrong in any way. And as a black man, as you mentioned, I grew up in this school district. I saw racism in this school district at times, and I know Joe Oswald very well, and he's not that, I can say, full-heartedly without- I can say, wholeheartedly, without blinking, that that's not Joe Oswald. So, in hopes of wanting to make this school district, which I think is the best in the world, just like I think America is the greatest country. It's not perfect, and I hope that everybody wants to make it better. And if that's what that termination was to do, to make kids feel more inclusive, to, to make sure that they're loved on, appreciated, and cared out. Outside of being an athlete or a student, the termination of Joe Oswald would do the opposite of that. It would hurt the cause. He's one of the good ones. So it makes me very upset.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board members? Board Member Sparks?
Thank you for coming, I'm from Texas. Have you ever heard the, a racial slur repeated?
Have I ever heard a racial slur repeated? Yes.
Have you ever heard the N-word repeated?
Yes, sir.
How did that make you feel?
It depends on the context, the situation, if that makes sense. I've repeated it before. You know, if the family members have repeated it before, you know? So it depends on the context, wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions from board members? Any other questions from councils?
I don't have any questions.
I do.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
We talked about, as to the context of this, and you obviously care a lot for this man.
Yes.
But if he had called out a student and called him that N-word, would you be sitting here-
He should have been terminated.
Pardon?
He should have been terminated if that was the case.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Hatley?
May the witness be excused.
Yes, he may.
Yes.
You can stay, Logan, you don't have to be excluded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cheadle.
Thank you, I'm sorry. This is, this is Austin Dismondon?
Yep, that's correct.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Desmond.
Desmond?
Yeah, Desmond.
Mr. Desmond, would you please raise your right hand so we can swear you in here? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Can I call you Austin?
Yes.
Austin, where do you currently live?
I currently live in Chicago, Illinois, but I reside right now in Dallas, Texas.
After you're a recent graduate of Northwestern, is it?
That's correct.
And you are a classmate and teammate of Logan, are you not?
That is correct.
How do you know Joe Oswald?
He's a coach, mentor, father figure. He's been around, you know, for as long as I can remember. You know, one of the best men I've ever had the pleasure of interacting with.
Are you aware of the fact that we are here tonight because the administration is asking for the termination of his teaching contract?
Yes, I am.
Do you know why they're asking for that?
Yes.
How do you feel about that?
It hurts me to, you know, see someone of high character be dragged through the mud like this. It feels like, you know, an example is trying to be made out of him and he's not that individual. You know, I've known him for several years now and, you know, I can't think of a person of higher character. He's, like I said, he's been like a father figure to me. He's constantly checking in on me. You know, he's allowed me, you know, he's given me the confidence to go out and achieve great things. Like, I don't think that I would have been able to go to the school I went to for undergraduate and, you know, complete my masters without the confidence that he instilled in me. While I was at Lee Summit West. You know, I was, I was at a pretty low place when I first got the chance to be coached by Coach Oswald. Wasn't, wasn't going well at all, but he kinda took me under his wing. Really gave me the confidence to do great things on the field and, you know, with that confidence, you know, I went to the school of my dreams, one of the best private institutions in the Midwest. And then on to Northwestern to complete my graduate schooling. So, you know, I owe a lot of credit for, you know, the success that I have experienced to that man over there.
In the time that you've known him, have you ever heard him utter a racial slur?
No, not, not once.
You understand that he is being charged with the fact that he said a racial slur on two occasions during the discipline process of a student?
Yes.
You don't know that student, right?
No.
Now, is context important to you in considering someone using racial slurs or profanity?
Yes, I think context is everything, especially in this situation.
Is it your understanding that Coach Oswald was repeating what the student had said?
Yes. It's my understanding that he was repeating what the student had said and following the procedures that were set forth.
You're here certainly endorsing this man?
Yes, I am.
But if I told you that he had actually said, uttered a racial slur towards someone in a derogatory manner, or directly called him that N-word, would you be here in support of him?
No.
Did you ever know Joe Oswald even do anything like that?
No, not at all, never.
I have no other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Any board members have questions for this particular witness? Mr. Hatley?
Mr. Sparks, no. Thank you, and I think we're ready-
You're free to go, or you may remain for the remainder of the hearing, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond, appreciate it.
Anthony?
Mr. McGee, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you please raise your right hand to be sworn in as witness? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you.
Mr. McDormand, sorry.
Where do you live?
Lee Summit, Missouri.
What's your occupation?
I'm a scout for the Kansas City Chiefs.
Do you know these two gentlemen seated behind you?
Very well. Those are my brothers.
Were they your, your teammates?
Teammates, brothers, classmates, however you want to define them. Those are blood.
You had one additional member of that brotherhood, didn't you? Dwayne Simmons?
Yes, sir, we did. And he passed away a few years ago. His life was taken. And that moment made us all closer as a family. Including that man right there, too.
You feel very close to him?
As close as I can be.
Was he close with Dwayne as well?
Very. He molded Dwayne into the, the man that he was, the player he was, on and off the field. These two behind me could attest to that as well.
Was he a speaker at his celebration of life?
I'm sorry?
Was Mr. Oswald a speaker at, at the celebration of life?
Yes, sir. He was a speaker, and it did not take anything extra to try to talk him into doing it. He was happy to do it and did a very good job.
In the time that you've known this man, have you ever seen him utter a racial slur towards any person?
Out of all my years knowing him, he's coached a lot of black men in the position that he's coached. I've never once heard him say a racial slur, a cuss word, nothing derogatory at all.
You understand that he's being charged for a purpose of termination of saying an N-word, a racial slur, two times to a student as he was processing her for discipline? You understand that?
I do, and it's an upsetting time.
Is context important in judging what someone says or does with respect to you as an individual?
Context is everything.
If Joe Oswald had called this student that name, simply referred to her by that N-word, would you be here speaking on his behalf?
As a black man in 2021, I'm sitting here defending him saying the word in the context that he said it in. If it was malicious, I would not be here right now.
But you've never seen him do that, have you?
Never even seen him say a cuss word.
I have no other questions.
I have no questions.
Do any board members have questions for this particular witness? Okay, Mr. Hatley?
May, may the witness be excused?
He may be excused.
Yes.
Sir, you're free to remain or leave.
Thank you for your time, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is Lemuel or Limbo Parks?
Good evening, Mr. Parks. Would you please raise your right hand to be sworn in as a witness, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Mr. Parks, where do you live?
Kansas City, Missouri.
What is your occupation?
I'm the ISS coordinator at Lee Summit West High School.
And are you also a coach there?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been employed by this district?
Going on seventeen, eighteen years now.
Do you know Joe Oswald?
Yes, sir.
How do you know him?
I coached with him for twelve years.
Was that LS West?
Yes, sir.
In the time that you coached with him, did you observe his interaction between the students or the players on the team?
Yes, sir.
And did that include both white, black, all, all read that route for the team?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever observe him ever use a racial slur towards any of the players?
Never, never. He would never say that.
You're familiar, are you not, with what he's being accused of here tonight?
Yes, sir.
And you understand that that was the processing of a student for the use of an N-word?
Yes, sir.
Understand that the administration is asking that he be terminated because he repeated that word twice to that student?
Yes, sir.
Is context important?
Absolutely, yes.
You know that he's uttered that word, does that change in any respect what you just told me about him?
Excuse me, what do you mean?
Well, you, you understand that he, he has not denied the fact that he said that word twice to the student. You understand that?
Yes.
Does that change your opinion of whether or not he's-
It's the way he said it, he wasn't calling him the name. He was just explaining what was going on.
And is there a difference in that?
Absolutely. He's not calling him the name, he's just explaining what, what the infraction was.
I think when I visited with you, how long have you been in this profession?
Oh, God, twenty-one years.
Has all of it been in the Lee Summit?
No, Raypack School District.
And how long have you been here?
Seventeen, eighteen.
Do you know what a racist is?
Absolutely. I, um, worked in university down at Arkansas for twelve years. I worked in factories. I know what racism is.
Is Joe Oswald a racist?
No. If, uh, if it's in him, it would have came out before now. It never would have, I mean, never has he ever said anything racist or hurtful to a student, ever. He would never do it. He's always been positive. He's the most positive person I've ever been around. And he's a brother to me.
I don't have any other questions.
Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board Member Sparks? Mr. Parks?
Yes, sir.
As being an ISS teacher, are you also responsible for disciplining students, meaning writing up a referral?
Yes.
Have you ever had to write up a referral for using a racial slur?
Oh, yes, sir.
And in writing a referral, what has been your process or your training that you have received on how to do that?
I will write down exactly what they said, okay? And normally students will ask you, why are you writing me up? And I will tell them exactly why I'm writing you up and what they exactly said and turn it into the administrator.
So you would repeat verbatim exactly what terms they used with the student?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, did you receive that training and that's why that's the process that you take?
That's what I've been told to do, to write down exactly what was said.
Who actually told you that that is the process to, to do a write-up?
Administrators.
And so when you say administrators, are you speaking of Dr. Sharp?
Um, speaking of every administrator that I've had at Western.
So is that formal training, or is that just through passing? Is that through you actually writing up someone? And then how, how did you receive that training or that instruction from Dr. Sharp? Or if there's other administrators that you can name verbatim, I would like to also know those names.
Well, Mr. Han, write down exactly what they said. And I wrote, and I wrote, I, I would write it down. I mean, I'm not gonna write anything that's not true. I'm gonna write exactly what was said and leave it at that. That's not my job to, to put down discipline. I'm gonna write down what they say and give it to the administrator, that's their job.
So to write down and to repeat it to the student is the training that you've received?
Normally for me, I usually tell them, so they'll understand what, so, so there will not be no, I'm putting words in their mouth, this is what's being said. This is what I'm sending down. And then it's out my hands.
So is it training, or is this just a practice that you have kinda taken?
Oh, training.
And it's coming from the administrators?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Fritchy?
Thank you. Actually, my question was exactly as, as Mr. Sparks put it, but just to go a little bit farther, let's be clear. You're the ISS supervisor at Lee Summit West High School.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so many of our other witnesses are faculty members from Pleasantly Middle School. So I, we're just, I was just trying to get that straight, so that we know that more than one school. Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Any further questions from councils?
I have a question. You're assigned, as, as we just established, to Lee Summit West High School, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if there was building specific training at Pleasantly Middle School, you would not have been part of that, is that correct?
No.
I have no further questions.
Anything else?
Were you ever told not to say a racial slur to a student?
I was never told not to. I was told to write exactly what, what said. If it was a racial slur, if it was a cuss word, I wrote exactly what was said.
And you, then you told them, this is what I'm saying?
This is exactly what I'm gonna say.
That way, if they disagreed with you, they had that option.
They knew exactly what was gonna be said to the administrator, what was, what I was gonna write down.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused?
Yes, he may.
Ms. Basie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Sir, you're free to leave or remain.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Good evening, Mr. Spiegel.
Hi.
Would you please raise your right hand to be sworn in as witness, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Spiegel, what is your current occupation?
I'm an area director for Jersey Mike Subs.
Prior to that, were you in the teaching profession?
Yes. I've been an educator for thirty-five years in high school, uh, also a football coach and track and field coach. Thirty-one of those thirty-five years was in our seventh school district.
When did you retire from the district?
I retired in May of two thousand fourteen.
Do you know Joe Oswald?
Yes, I do.
How long have you known him?
I've known Joe for over twenty years.
And was that professionally through the district or is it personal?
Well, I first met Joe through the district, okay, as an assistant coach in nineteen ninety-four and then since to current. So I've known Joe since nineteen ninety-four.
Did you have occasion to observe his interaction with students during the time that you were employed by the district?
Yes, sir.
Was that in the coaching realm?
The majority of it was in the coaching realm, yes, both football and track and field.
You've heard the term racial slur, have you not?
Yes, sir.
And have you ever, did you ever see Joe Oswald use a racial slur towards any student?
No, sir. Joe would never do that.
I don't believe I have any other questions. Thank you.
Ms. Basy?
I don't have any questions.
Board members? Okay, Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Sir, you're free to leave or you may stay for the remainder of the hearing or part of the hearing if you'd like.
Can I say anything else? I thought I was gonna help Joe with character.
Well-
He's a character witness.
Uh, you can only answer questions that the attorneys ask you, so-
Okay, that's fair.
He's already been excused.
Is there an objection?
Objection, he's been excused.
Yeah, I think he's been excused. I think, I think we need to release him.
You are released. Thank you, sir.
Okay, sorry.
Appreciate your time.
You'll need to be sworn by Mr. Murdoch.
Could I have your name? There we go. Thank you, appreciate it. So, Ms. Sebal, would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McDormand?
Where do you live, Sebal?
I live in Lake Guanabago.
And are you employed by this district?
I am.
What is your position with the district?
I am an athletic director's secretary at Lee Summit West High School.
How long have you been employed by the district?
Uh, eight years.
Do you know Joe Oswald?
Very well, yes, sir.
How long have you known him?
Twenty-five years, I believe.
Are you familiar with his reputation as to truthfulness?
Yes, I am.
What is that reputation?
He is very well respected in a community and in around our community and in our school district by many teachers and neighbors. Um, it's of the utmost character, nothing but good things.
Did he coach two of your children?
Yes, he did.
Did you ever observe him uttering a racial slur towards any students?
Never.
Did you ever hear him utter the N-word or racial slur towards anyone?
I have never heard that.
I have no other questions.
Spacey?
I don't have any questions.
Board members, any questions? Okay, Mr. Hatley?
May this witness be excused?
Yes.
He may.
Am you free to leave or you may remain for more of the hearing if you'd like?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murdoch, could we just, if only Mr. Oswald left, could I have just two or three-minute break before we start with that?
Certainly. Yep, absolutely. Let's start again in five minutes, okay?
That'd be fine.
Thank you, sir. Oh, well, no, no, we're not. I'm just joking. Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. You moved from that. I apologize. Ten till twelve.
We all make mistakes.
Yes, yes, we do. No longer, Your Honor, I am now lowly. Okay. Mr. Oswald, would you please raise your hand to be sworn in, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDormand?
Thank you. Where do you live?
Lake Guanabago, Missouri.
You're here with your family tonight?
Yes, sir.
Joe, how long have you been employed by this district?
Twenty-seven years.
That's straight without interruption.
Yes, sir.
How many years have you been in the educational field?
I just completed twenty-nine years.
And you're ready for that thirtieth, but for this, right?
Yes.
Your contract that you've signed, is it again for, uh, for this coming school year for the same position as a PE teacher for seventh grade boys?
Seventh and eighth grade, yes, sir.
Seventh and eighth grade. In your time that you've been here, has that been your primary position with the district as far as teaching?
For most of those years, yes.
What else besides that?
Um, I've been, uh, ISS supervisor, like, just a few hours during the day on occasion, depending on the year, and I also taught science at Pleasantly Middle School. Well, it was Pleasantly Junior High at that time, but-
And with respect to the middle school that you're currently in, how long have you been in that school?
I've been at that school for twenty-four years. Twenty-four years.
One thing that has been very for you has been your coaching experience. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So how many different sports have you coached?
Um, I've coached primarily three different sports, 'cause, I mean, it's tough to coach more than that. Well, actually, no, I've coached four sports, four.
What are they?
Um, I started off, uh, football and baseball at Lee Summit High School, and then I, uh, was also the, um, uh, basketball coach at Pleasantly Middle School. Um, I've coached track, um, at both the high school level and at Pleasantly Middle School, and, um, then I, I also coached football, uh, while I was getting my masters and doing some further education. I had to step away from varsity football 'cause it just takes so much time, and so I coached, um, football at Pleasantly Middle School, and then, once I completed that, um, degree, I was able to, um, coach at Lee Summit West High School, and now I'm back at Lee Summit High School.
You've, uh, you've had the opportunity to coach a lot of good young men, have you not?
Uh, yes, sir. We've got some great students here in this community.
Three of them are seated there behind you.
Yes, those are three, three excellent, um, excellent young men that come from great families and, but, I mean, there's, there's hundreds more.
You enjoy this profession, don't you?
Very much so.
And you enjoy the kids that you get to interact with?
Absolutely.
You've gone, you've indicated that you, since your employment here, you've continued to, uh, increase your educational background. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Um, I have, um, completed a master's degree, um, through, um, University of Central Missouri. I've also completed a, um, positive sports coaching, sports psychology degree from the University of Missouri Columbia, um, which basically took me to, um, uh, you know, master's plus forty-five, and I've taken some additional courses that the district offers, um, you know, throughout the year in the summertime.
Some of your, um, ongoing training at the district level has been, was introduced as an exhibit here. You saw that?
Yes.
You've had, you've participated, have you not, in training nearly every year that you've been employed by this district?
Yes.
And what does the term BIST mean to you?
Uh, BIST is, um, Behavior Intervention Support Team, and, um, basically, it's just a, a program that, um, was introduced several years ago, but it's kind of been sporadic as far as the, um, level of, um, commitment, I would say, uh, kind of changes from administrator or, you know, like building principal to building principal. Um, but, uh, you know, the last, um, seven or eight years, it was introduced, and I, I had training prior to last summer, but, um, last summer when, uh, or two years ago, when Dr. Sharp came in, that was a, a big focus of his because he wanted to really make those connections with kids, and, I mean, I kind of do that anyway. Um, I make connections with kids all the time, and, um, I try to really get to know them and relate to them, and, uh, and so it kind of fit hand in hand to really study how that program worked, and, um, you know, even prior to my training last summer, uh, you know, you're constantly trying to find ways to build relationships with kids, um, and try to understand them, and they understand where you're coming from, and so, uh, some of the processes and stuff that BIST offered, uh, really conformed to some of my skill sets.
You enjoy what you're doing?
Very much so. You, you have to enjoy this, this line of work. I mean, you, you have to love kids, you have to, uh, want to be around kids. Um, this isn't an easy profession by any means.
Green slips, what's that mean to you?
Um, to me, it means last resort usually. You know, they've done something that either they've made a bad choice or they've done something that, you know, I couldn't prevent them from doing, and by prevent, you know, I'm basically mean, um, you know, just through my relationship, I don't, I don't want them to, to, uh, act out in class. I don't want them to, um, you know, put themselves in that position. Um, I try to keep it fun and, uh, but I still make them work hard, and, um, I think they know I care, and so, um, they, I, I don't, I don't have that many issues with green slips. I don't write a lot of them. Um, I think I've maybe had, uh, I've written one or two, um, in the last fifteen, sixteen months, and the one in question is probably maybe the only one.
All right, you've been here twenty-seven years. Has the green slip been here the whole time?
Um, yes, I mean, obviously, I think we've established that. Um, you know, now it's pretty much, um, an ER, electronic referral, uh, but, um, prior to, to bringing in the technology piece, uh, the discipline referral was just referred to the green strip, green, green slip because of the color of, of the paper.
Have you received specific training on filling out the green slip?
Um, nothing formal, and I think that's, that's part of the confusion, um, as we sit here tonight. Um, we hear the word "training" all the time, and I think, uh, it means different things to different people, and in certain areas, um, we might say we get trained in this area, uh, but it's not really in-depth training. Uh, we just kind of use that as a buzzword. Um, and then, you know, in other aspects, uh, the district does a very good job of, of facilitating, um, measures to train staff on what to do in specific situations.
Have you ever been provided training as to how you report an incident that involves a racial slur?
No, not, not specifically. Um, I think when it comes to the discipline referral, it's kind of like it's, it's training by mistake. You know, when you make a mistake, um, the administration comes to you and they kind of correct maybe what you didn't complete or you didn't do the way they want it, and so they kind of just give you a cue on how they want it done.
What, what, in that respect, what training have they provided you as to the accuracy of, of the green slip?
Well, it's just expected that, um, we write down exactly what happened. Um, it's expected that we, um, if any words were said or a phrase toward someone, that we write it down exactly how it happened. Um, we also include on the green slip, you know, any other students involved, specific details, you know, witnesses, and, uh, you know, just, what, what you try to do is you try to provide the best, most accurate information for the administrator.
Does that also benefit the student?
Um, yes, very much so. I mean, uh, you know, several times or as much as I can remember, you know, I, I would have an administrator come to me or, you know, um, they might not agree with everything that you have put on the green slip, and they said, "Did you let the student know what he was being disciplined for?" And I said, I would say, "Yes." You know, I conference with the student, I communicated with him and, or her, and I let them know exactly why they were being, um, sent up for a referral. I, I usually say "he" because I teach boys PE. I, I don't, I don't process that much with, uh, female students on the discipline side, but most, most, my experience has been mostly with the male students.
What's been your practice when you are writing up a report as to something that's said by a student? Do you, you, in this instance that we're talking about, you wrote it out?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you, you write it down. Um, you know, you don't say F-word. Um, you, you write down exactly what you heard or what you said, or if you have two students, then you have to write, maybe they said one word, one student said something to, to one student, and that student retaliated, and you have to do two separate ones, and you have to include, um, what happened for each student, et cetera, so you're, you're pretty specific. So that way, the administrator, he, he knows what he has to work with, or she knows what she has to work with, and, uh, you know, I mean, we, we don't necessarily, you know, really go deep into it. We don't investigate. We don't investigate or anything like that, you know? But when I usually process with them, I usually just ask them if there's anything that I've left out or anything that, that, you know, maybe something happened before, you know, I saw him kick this other student or whatever. And I try to find out exactly what the deal is in case there's other students involved in that, that particular situation.
Have you ever been provided from the administration a list of what they considered racial slurs?
No, sir.
May sixth, twenty-twenty-one, was it Thursday?
Yes.
How did it come that you were in at this? Now, I'm sure you feel like at the wrong place at the right time or the wrong place period, right?
I just, uh, I was, I was going somewhere and I can't even remember where I was going to. But I came through the mezzanine and where they had an extra lunch area. And I just spoke to Casey. And we were in a conversation and we heard a commotion behind us and something was yelled out and blurted out across the mezzanine.
Turn to, to exhibit four, if you would please.
Are you gonna make me read my handwriting?
Better you than me.
Okay, I'm here.
All right. Now, you, you've just stated that you heard something said. You're on, I assume, page eight of that exhibit four.
I'm there.
And that's the green slip or very poor copy of it, right?
Yes, sir.
So that is all your handwriting?
Guilty.
Now, the student in question, you'd become acquainted with just in the last week or two, is that right?
Yes. We've had a group of students that have been, been causing some issues in the hallway and outside by the buses. And we had several students that needed escorts to the buses prior to the dismissal bell. And so Mr. Lindquist came down to me and just gave me a heads up that I was gonna start to escort a female student prior to the bell. And he told me where to go to get, where that student would be for me to go and, and take her from where she was to the bus. So I had escorted her two or three times. And like I do with all kids, I just started building a relationship with her the first day. Told her, you know, that she probably didn't know me, but I told her my name and that, I said, do you know why I'm escorting you? And she said, no. And I said, well, we've had some issues and we want to try to keep you guys safe. And so I'm just gonna walk you to your bus and make sure that happens every day. And we, I asked her what she did after school and, you know, what her routine was. Did she do homework or, and then get a snack or get a snack, do homework? And, you know, we just had kind of small talk and I took her to her bus. And, and then the next day, when the next opportunity came to escort her, you know, we talked about something else. And I asked her that particular day, I think, if she was gonna go out for track. And, you know, she said, no, she didn't like sports. And I said, I think you'd probably be a pretty good runner. You might like it next year when you're in eighth grade. And we talked about, I just was telling her about some of the things she, she could do. And, you know, the next day, we talked about something else. I mean, you know, there's a reason why I was escorting her. And, you know, she was among a list of students that were having difficulty getting along. So I just tried to build a relationship with her and, and befriend her the best I could. She's a seventh grader, so she doesn't know me that well. She hasn't been in, in our co-ed classes, you know, because sometimes I, I, we, we combine boys and girls classes and we do different activities. And, you know, I just was doing my thing. I mean, I care about kids and you can't know too much about them. You can never know too much about them to help them. And, you know, I think that's one of the big things that I try to live by is that you never know what someone else is, is going through in their life. And that, that's really important as a teacher with kids. But, you know, a lot of times it's important as adults when we speak to one another, when we meet each other in the hallway, we never know what the other person that we meet or that we're in close contact with that day doing activities, we never know what they're going through. So I just try to keep that always in mind whenever I'm interacting with kids and, and adults.
All right, so let's get back to.
Sorry.
That's right. You told Casey that you would escort her to the stad office, right?
Yes, I, I just, I knew Casey wasn't done with his lunch shift yet. And I just, when I turned around and I kind of located who yelled it, I was a little disappointed to see who it was. And I just thought Casey wasn't done. And I've been talking to this girl for two or three days. And here was another opportunity for her to understand me and for me to understand her a little bit better. And, you know, it wasn't just walking her to the bus. This was, you know, probably in her eyes, this was a, a negative event. But in my eyes, I saw an opportunity. So I decided, I just told Casey, I said, I'll, I'll take her down.
And did you talk with her or you took her to the office?
Yes, I went, I went over to her pretty quick. That's kind of, you know, the thing about using BIST is, you know, the discipline process has its own process. I mean, and the expectations, as long as I've been in this district, is to write everything down, be detailed, exact words. In, you know, what students are involved, you know, just everything. The BIST process isn't really used in the discipline process outside of the techniques of BIST and the language of BIST. And so, you know, during that training, I just, you know, you, there, there's five keys. And you're quick, kind, calm, firm, and close. And that's what you just try to do. So you, you address it pretty quickly and you get close to them. You don't yell from a mile away. And then, you know, you're, you're calm and you're kind. And I went over to her and I asked her, at, at that point on the mezzanine, I said, you know, what's, what's going on? And she was still pretty emotional. And she was just telling me, you know, she's staring at me, I don't like her staring at me. And I said, well, how do you know that she's staring at you? And she says, because every time I look at her, she's staring at me. And I said, well, maybe she thinks you're staring at her. And she was still just very upset. And so, you know, part of BIST is to determine their, you know, their level of honesty, determine their temperament. And so at that point, I just backed off. I, I didn't say anything else. And I just said, well, follow me and we'll, we'll go to stad. And we, we continued to walk, you know, for the good portion, coming from the upper level of the gym all the way down the hallway, through the normal lunch area, down the hall. And then I tried to reassess to see if I could separate feeling from behavior. And, you know, I said, do you have outbursts like this at home? I mean, you try to connect the classroom to real life. And so, you know, I, I can't remember what she said because she was kind of turned away from me, but she just said, you know, sometimes or it happens or I, I can't remember exactly. And I may have asked her another question about, you know, just her interactions with the other girl. I can't really remember, but I was just trying to, I was trying to get feedback from her to see where she was. And she was definitely in a different place then, than she was on the mezzanine. And so by that time, we got to the stad office. And I opened the door and I, I let her go in. I said, just have a seat right there in this, in this chair. And then I walked to Ms. Mary, the secretary's desk.
And from there, did you start filling out the report?
Yes, sir.
The district issues laptops to you, do they not?
Yes.
Did you have that with you?
Obviously, I didn't have it with me. I, I wasn't, I wasn't on duty that, at that particular moment. I wasn't teaching class and I wasn't, I wasn't on lunchroom supervision. I have, I have a later shift, a later lunch shift.
So you went old school with the actual slip, is that right?
Yeah, I believe I just said, you know, Ms. Mary, we've had an incident in the lunchroom. And she, she handed me a green slip pretty quickly. And I took it and I went behind the secretary's desk to like a credenza. And I knelt down on the floor and I began to fill out the information that I knew. You know, her name, grade, you know, my name, filling it out. I guess I've got it right here. Date, location. And then I began to fill out the nature of the problem. And so I, I just filled out everything, you know, included what I believed she had said. And then I, I asked her for more information, you know, because maybe something happened before she yelled that I didn't know or didn't see. And so I would, I would have put that on there as well. And I said, who did you yell this at? And she told me and I wrote down the, the other girl's name. And then I said, have you had problems with her in the past? Or is this, is this just a one-day occurrence? And she just said that she had issues with her and, but today she was staring at her and she didn't like it.
So did you put down in that report the exact words you believe that she, you heard her say in the mezzanine?
Yes, I mean, that's what I believe she said.
And you put them in quotation marks?
Yes.
Why? What does that mean?
You know, it's just something I think that, that comes natural when you're quoting somebody. I've done that for twenty-five, twenty-seven years. And that's just kind of what you do when you're quoting somebody and, and writing down, you know, it kind of signifies, you know, what they said. And, and it separates it from the other details on the, on the, on the green slip.
Once you finished writing this out, Joe, what did you do next with student A?
I went over because, you know, you're supposed to get close to them. And, you know, that proximity thing. And so I went over and stood right in front of her. And I just said, you know, I'm gonna read this back to you. I want to make sure that it's accurate. I don't want to accuse you of saying anything that you didn't say. And, you know, if there's something not, not correct, I need to know. And I just read word for word exactly what was on the nature of the problem.
And the word that's contained in this is what you actually believe you heard her say, is that correct?
I mean, that's what I.
You didn't say N-word to somebody. You used the actual slur, am I right?
Yes, I mean, that's what I believed that I heard. I mean, obviously, I wasn't anticipating someone yelling. I was in a conversation myself. We had masks on. And, you know, it's, the lunchroom was loud. There were students, some students were taking their trays and dumping them and others weren't. It's at the end of the lunch shift. So that's what I believe she said. But, you know, I, I was just making sure that I had it correct.
So you read that, that quote out loud?
Yes, sir. I, I, I didn't, I didn't separate the quote. I just read exactly what I had written down. Because, I mean, I'm not trying to just confirm her words. I'm trying to, I'm trying to just make sure that, you know, the whole thing is accurate. You know, all parts of it. And so, I mean, that's what I've been told to do. I mean, you know, told by who? Well, I've had six, you know, I've had six, probably six building principals and ten, you know, assistant principals over my, over the course of my career here. And, you know, it just kind of builds on top of each other. You know, what's expected and a new one comes in. And, you know, it's just kind of, that's just kind of the way, way it, it happened. I mean, we're not, we don't go through any, you know, formal training. You know, a lot of it is assumed, I guess. And, you know, that's just what I, that's just kind of what I've been told to do and how I've been told to do it. I didn't know that, you know, you shouldn't do something that, that someone doesn't want us to do. I didn't, I didn't know.
You repeated it twice, am I correct?
I read back the green slip twice, yes.
First time because of your training?
Yes, I mean, I was, I was just reading back for accuracy and, and to make sure that, that, I, I didn't, I didn't accuse someone of, of saying something that they didn't say. And wanted to make sure that, that the other information on there was correct. I said it the first time, yes.
And what was student A doing while you were doing this?
Well, I, I was just looking down at the green slip. And then when I looked up, when I finished with the very last word, staring at her, I looked up and student A was leaning toward the door that we came through to go into the office. And she was laughing. And at first, I didn't know if she was trying to avoid the process. I didn't know if she was just being disrespectful. I didn't know. She was, you know, I already, I already figured out that because of what she did on the mezzanine, see, part of BIST is finding out their missing skill, you know? And I already figured out that, that student A just needed help with the skill of self-control. And so I just kind of quickly said, you know, well, she's impulsive. You know, she's leaning back or leaning to the side and laughing. And so, you know, part of the process is to make sure that they engage with you so that you have a two-way understanding. They can't hear you until they know that you will hear them. And so I was trying to just make sure that she heard me and that she understood me.
And was it after you'd said this, read back her words the first time, that you became aware of another student in there?
Well, yeah, when she was laughing, I mean, it happens just really, really fast. And then I heard another noise behind me and I was unsure, you know? And I, I kind of turned and, I mean, I was surprised that there was another, even another student in the room because I, I did not realize another student was in the room.
And for the record we're making, you're, you looked over your left shoulder?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then, did student A then at that time ask you to read it again?
Yes.
And did you comply with that? And did you comply with that?
Well, I turned back around and while I was saying, or maybe I was asking her, uh, what was so funny? I was kind of thinking, uh, this was none of your business to the, you know, I was kind of thinking, this is none of your business. And I shifted over just a little bit and I tried to get her to focus back on me, just with the processing here. And I just said, I don't know what's so funny. I just need to make sure that before you see Mr. Lindquist, um, you know, that this is what happened. So, you know, this isn't what happened on the mezzanine and you didn't say. And I, you know, I, I, I basically formed it in an interrogative sentence. And uh, you know, a questioned sentence.
Was it that time she says, read it again?
Well, it was before that, before I read it the second time.
Now-
You know, the, you know, after, after I read it, if I may continue, after I read it the second time, she, she didn't give me a response again. There, so um, I said, I basically said to her, well, by your non-response, you're just not ready to, to communicate or, or continue building this relationship. So I handed the, the green slip to the stat secretary that was three or four feet away.
And at that point in time, were you ready to leave the office?
Yes.
Now, you had some interaction with this other student in there as well, did you not?
Yes.
Tell us about that.
Well, I mean, I didn't know he was in there, first of all. And then after, right after she didn't respond to me the second time, and I'm literally talking to her discreetly. Um, because, you know, I've learned that, I mean, when you raise your voice, they don't hear you. You know, I mean, I've got a pretty big voice because I teach PE and I coach football. So if I want to use a big voice, I can use a big voice. Um, these guys and others can attest to it. But um, I've learned, I mean, twenty-nine years of, of teaching, you know, you, you can't, you, you have to understand the environment that you're in and, and what you're trying to do. So when she didn't um, respond the second time, I just said, you know, by your non-response, you're just not ready. And then I, I handed, I hand, you know, I just assumed that what I had down was correct because she wasn't giving me any more information about this isn't right, or no, this happened. Um, and so I handed it to the secretary. And then at that, and the secretary really wasn't looking at me. Um, she was trying to deal with the other student. Um, but she did take it from me. And then she just told the others, the other student that I was unaware of, was in the room, um, that he needed to bring her cell, his cellphone up to the desk, to her desk. And so, um, I do, just going to kind of help her out. So I walked over and I looked down the right and down the left side and I said, you know, you got your cellphone? And he said, it's, he either said it's put up or it's off. And I said, okay, just, just keep it off and, or keep it put away, I think I said. And then I asked him, you know, what he was working on, you know, are you getting any homework done? Because he had his Chromebook open. And then that was it. And I turned back toward Mary, um, uh, the stat secretary. And um, she was asking student A where her next class was. And because she was going to fill out an, an E-hall pass and, and um, she told Ms. Mary who she had and that teacher was just like twenty-five feet away from where, where we were. And so the secretary asked me if I would escort her um, to her next class. So I did. And we walked out the door. I took her around the corner to her next class. I walked in and, I mean, this isn't my first rodeo. I know what happens when students come into class late. And so, I was going to deflect. And the teachers understand when, when another teacher's bringing another student to them, what's going on. Either I needed to see her after class or him, or they've been to the office. And so I walked in right in the middle of class. And the teacher was um, just beginning her lesson, I think. And I walked right in the middle, almost halfway to the teacher. And um, I said, hey, it's getting close. Because she had a wedding in two days. I said, are you ready? Are you excited or are you nervous? And she said a little bit of both. And by that time, student A had taken her seat. And the rest of the students in the class, they were looking at me. So they didn't, I mean, they didn't necessarily pay attention to the student that was behind me. And so, then I left.
And at that point, you have no reason to believe there's anything else going to involve you with respect to this?
No, sir. I, I thought I did everything exactly what was um, expected of me in a professional and courteous way.
Well, that was May sixth. Were you contacted by anyone on May seventh? Specifically, Mr. Lindquist that, that indicated you that you were not supposed to read a racial slur out loud?
No, he, he never indicated to me that I was supposed to not do something or do something, no.
Well, then does the next time anything develops with respect to this? Is May tenth?
No, um, he came to me at some point and just told me that he had somebody else to escort Ava.
Did he tell you that she'd asked for that?
I can't recall. I, I, I really can't recall, I don't know.
Didn't really give you much, you didn't-
No, he, he, no, he, he asked me, he did ask me, um, you know, um, if I, you know, processed with her and stuff. Or he said, read the green slip? And I said, yes, I did. And, and he said, did you word, you know, did you read it, you know, read the words? And I said, yes. And that, that was it. I didn't, he didn't indicate anything at that time to me.
Did you have any, any knowledge at that time? That the district had a policy that you don't read out loud?
No, I, I, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to say a racial slur to anyone. So I know not to, not to, you know, direct a racial slur toward anyone. That's not me. I mean, that, those words have never come through my lips toward anyone. And, I mean, I just was, thought I was doing what I was supposed to. So, no.
So then, the next event, is that on May tenth on a Monday?
Yes.
And tell me what you recall about that day?
Um, yeah, I, I was teaching class and Mr. Lindquist came down and, and um, he wanted to know where my colleague, where my colleague was. And I told him I may be in the office, I don't know. And he said, well, I need to get, need to get someone to cover your class. So um, he, he did. And I was introducing a game. And once I um, finished explaining the rules uh, to the kids, um, he had someone there to uh, supervise my class for me. And then uh, we walked down to Mr. Sharp's class, or Dr. Sharp's uh, office.
Um, you've seen, and I think they're looking at exhibit four. Think starting with page seven of that exhibit, the page before the slip, there's, see at the bottom?
Yes.
Where it, it has your name?
Yes.
Right? Now, when you, who questioned you on that day?
Um, well, I don't know if I would label it questioned. Um, it was more like informed or, you know, just kind of called me into the office and asked me um, if I called a student the N-word? Is the first thing he asked me? And I said, no. Um, Mr. Lindquist was in there, but Dr. Sharp was the one, um, you know, asking me and stuff like that.
What I want you to do is look at LSR seven zero zero eleven.
Yes?
You've come to learn that's an email that was sent by the, the father of the student that was in the stat office on May sixth, is that correct?
Yes.
But at the time that you walked in to Mr. Sharp's office, am I correct where you went to on the-
Yes.
Did you know about this email?
No.
But is that where his questioning began of you was about this?
Um, well, at first, I didn't know why he asked me that. Um, he just asked me, did you call a boy student the N-word? And I said, no. And then, of course, I'm thinking, where are they, you know, in PE, in the lunchroom and all? I mean, I, I didn't have any idea what he was even referring to. And then he continued to tell me um, that um, he had received an email um, from a parent. And evidently, um, I, I thought he, I thought I recalled him saying they had received an email on Saturday. But um, but he just said that, that uh, someone said that you called them the N-word and told them to get busy or do something. Is what I recall. And I said, no, I'd never do that.
And then did they question you as well about your processing student?
No, not yet, not at that time. Um, um, he was having Mr. Lindquist try to, I guess, determine whether this parent's son was in the stat office at the same time or something. And they kept, uh, he let, uh, Lindquist left to go talk to the secretary. And, and Dr. Sharp and I kept, kept talking. And he just said, well, this, this email, I got to process this because um, you know, we, we just got to do some work here on it and figure out, you know, what's going on. And, and, you know, I said, I'd never do that. I, I would never do that. And he says, I know, you know, I know, you know, you and, and, you know, Dewan and, and the guys at West. I, I know how you interact with those guys. And, and I said, no, I'd never do that. And then it was determined, we figured out who the other student was. And I didn't know him. Um, I didn't have him in class. And so, you know, Dr. Sharp, you know, said, so you don't, you don't know him, you don't have him? I said, no. I said, I had his older brother, you know? I said, I had his older brother two or three years ago. I, I, I don't even know who this kid is. And I said, I had a good relationship with his brother. And I talked to the dad. Um, whenever the brother, whenever this kid's older brother was in track, uh, you know, he, he, he would come to practice one day, next day he wouldn't be there. And, you know, so I called the parent, uh, called the dad. And I talked to him about keeping his son out on the track team. This is the older, older son. And, and uh, he said, yeah, coach, I know, you know, he needs to, needs to be out there. And I said, I know. I said, he needs to be here, you know, with his peers and with his, you know, with the coaches and using his talents. And, and he goes, I agree, I agree. And so, you know, I said, well, I'll keep working on him. And he said, I'll keep working on him too. And that was the extent of the conversation. It was a short conversation, but, you know, and this same, this same boy, I, I uh, run an NFL flag football league in the spring and for the kids um, at school. And um, I knew this young man, not, I knew this older son wanted to really play because a lot of his friends were playing. And uh, he didn't give me his registration form, didn't give me his registration form. And I, I just said, listen, I got to have that form. You know, the deadline's tomorrow. And he goes, I know, I know, my dad won't, you know, won't get it done or whatever. And I said, listen, if money's the issue, don't worry about it. I'll cover it. Okay? You just got to bring me that form so I know what jersey size they get you and stuff. And he brought it to me the next morning before first hour with a big smile on his face. So, I mean, I knew the family, but I didn't know this other boy in the room. And then-
And I also, I believe, based on this exhibit, that they also questioned you about your processing of student A.
Yes, um, you know, Dr. Sharp just, he pointed to the green slip at that point and said that, uh, you know, he said, um, did you, did you say these words or this word? And I said, I read those words, those were her words. I mean, just to make sure I was accurate. Um, you know, so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't call her that or anything like that. But I, I did, I did check for accuracy, not just on those words, but the whole event. Um, just to make sure that I was, you know, right.
Well, after you told him what you did, did, did Dr. Sharp or Mr. Lindquist say to you, that's not the way you're supposed to do it? You're not supposed to re, say out loud a racial slur?
Um, not in those exact words. Um, Dr. Sharp just kind of looked at me and he was a little disappointed. And uh, he goes, you could have gave it to her and read it, you know, and she could have read it back. And I said, I, I didn't, I didn't know that's what I was supposed to do, you know? Um, I said, yeah, I, I could have. Um, but I'd done it the same way for, you know, years. And so, that's what I did.
If that's the policy, you don't have a problem in enforcing it that way, do you?
You mean, having them read it?
Yes.
No?
That's what they're-
No.
What administration wants?
No. But whatever, I mean, whatever the policy is, I would do it. I mean, that's just, I try to be thorough. Whatever, whatever I'm supposed to do as an employee, that's what I try to do. I mean, you know, if that's what they wanted me to do, if they didn't want me to write verbatim, I wouldn't have. I was just doing what I was told to do and how I was told to do it for years. And when I say told is, you know, it's kind of a, you know, ten, six different administrators over my twenty-seven years. And that's just kind of the process that was, you know, it was molded into. So I was just, I thought I was doing what was expected of me.
Now, this was on May tenth?
Yes.
On May eleventh, did you receive a phone call from Dr. Del Sim?
Yes, um, I taught all day Tuesday, uh, May eleventh. And then at four thirty, I think, around four thirty, um, I get a call from Dr. Del Sim.
And was that to advise you, you're being placed on administrative leave?
Yes, she says, um, well, we're going to have to replace you on administrative leave. And I said, for what? And she said, well, the conversation that you had with Dr. Sharp. So, part of me, if you will, um, if you'll allow me, uh, to go back to page seven, um, you know, for me, when I read this report, um, starting on page seven, my portion of it, because obviously I can't speak to the other portion, but it's, it's inaccurate. Um, and I'm not saying it's intentionally inaccurate, but it is inaccurate. Because the first thing we talked about when I entered Dr. Sharp's office was did I call somebody the N-word? "Did I call somebody the N-word?" And then, "No, I didn't do that. It's not correct." And then, um, you know, "Well, they said that you said this and, and we got an email and we gotta process this and we gotta figure out, you know, how to work through this." And, you know, I'm supposed to talk to the parent and, and, um, I'm talking about, we're trying to figure out who, who the other student was. And we talked about the, 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 his brother and my relationship there. And, and then he pointed to the green slip. So, the way this report appears is like, that's what we talked about first. And that's not what happened at all. Um, you know, and I'm not saying that it's intentional, it's just, uh, that's not the way it happened. I mean, in paragraph two on page eight, um, the very last word said that she said yes. I didn't say that 'cause she didn't say yes. She didn't respond to me at all. Um, on page nine, um, first paragraph, last sentence, um, it says that I asked student B, "What are you doing in here?" I didn't ask student B what he was doing in there 'cause that was none of my business. I, I asked him about his cellphone and then I asked him if he was getting work done. So, um, I'm not saying that th- those were intentional, but I thought I was being placed on administrative leave for saying a comment to, um, a, a young male student that I know I did not do. So, I asked Dr. Del Sim, um, when she told me the conversation that I had with Dr. Sharp, I'm like, "Okay. Well, what happens if you're accused of something that you didn't do?" 'Cause that's what I, that's what I recalled, our conversation being. And she says, "Well, we'll, we'll figure all that out. We'll figure all that out." And then she gave me all the parameters for being put on leave and, um, she gave me, uh, her number and Dr. Carlson's number, uh, to call. And, um, also my, my, um, my representative, my teacher organization representative's number.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks, yes, sir.
So then we go to May twelfth.
Yes.
Right? And at that time, you were interviewed by Dr. Carlson?
Yes, I mean, May eleventh, May twelfth, they all run together. I didn't, I didn't sleep.
I'm sorry, what?
May eleventh and May twelfth, they all run together 'cause I, I didn't sleep that night, I mean...
And that's on page three, four and five of his report, do you see that?
Yes, yes.
Now, is his report accurate or is there any inaccuracies within that?
Um, Dr. Carlson did a, did a very nice job. I mean, obviously, I, I, I mean, he called me and wanted me to come in for an interview, so I, I knew what was kinda going on. The, I mean, the one, the one thing I would say on his report is that he talked about the grievance and, and, you know, how I needed to be confidential and, and we talked about that and, and that he was investigating a board policy and, and, um, and then, you know, he said, "Well, tell me what happened." And I said, the very first thing I said was, "I'm not sure I know what I'm being accused of." So, the first two bullets on his report should be reversed, um, because that's the first thing I did. And I noticed tonight in his testimony, he, he said out loud what, what he said in his testimony tonight that he told me. But he didn't really tell me. He just went right to the green slip. And he just pulled that green slip out and asked me if I said that word. And then my words were not my words. Or I said, "No, I, I didn't say it." I said, "I read it." Those weren't my words. I was reading off the green slip. And, um, and I'm still thinking that we're going to get to some type of accusation of me talking to the boy, which was alleged, but...
But you were not, you, these, these documents, you didn't see these until last week, did you?
Exactly. I, yeah, I didn't see these until we received them.
Maybe the end of the week before, but...
Right.
But is it my request we got these documents?
Yes, sir.
They weren't shared with you?
No.
So you were not aware of the fact that on the same day that you were interviewed by Dr. Sharp, they also interviewed student A?
Was not aware, was not aware of any of that going on.
And that, of course, she corroborated your statement that you did not have, did not say anything to this boy specifically, not was in that email, that you looked him in the eyes and aggressively said the N-word to him, "What are you staring at?"
I, I learned that, yes.
But you, that wasn't told you when you met with Dr. Carlson?
No.
I don't know if he had it in the report or not, but this information was not shared to you through this process?
No.
All right, getting back to Dr. Carlson's three-page report, you've indicated some discrepancies here, but not anything that, that's other than the order and things you said were left out. Is there anything of...
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Carlson was, you know, he was very professional and, and, um, you know, he made sure I understood things, but I, I left there and I was really, I was, I was probably more confused after my interview with Dr. Carlson than when I got off the phone with Dr. Del Sim, but... Because they, I mean, they pivoted, I guess, from what I thought I was being put on leave for.
So when was the next contact by anyone from administration?
The nineteenth of May. That, I interviewed the twelfth. I got a con, I got a phone call the nineteenth.
Who was that fuck call from?
Dr. Del Sim.
And what did she say?
She said that we'd like you to come in, um, so that we can, um, speak with you about moving forward and what that's gonna look like. And she asked me if I'd come in on Friday at nine o'clock.
That was two days later, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And did you keep that appointment?
Yes, I, uh, she asked me if Mr. Brooks would be coming and I said I would get ahold of him to see if he could be there with me.
And who is Mr. Brooks?
He's my teachers' union representative.
MSTA?
Yes.
Did you keep that appointment?
Yes.
Who was present at that meeting?
Um, well, it was me, my, myself, Dr. Brook, or Mr. Brooks, um, Dr. Del Sim and Dr. Carlson.
Tell the board what happened at that meeting.
Um, I came in and, um, I sat down and Dr. Del Sim said, um, that they had come to a conclusion um, on their investigation and they were going to move toward termination.
Did you see that coming at all?
No, I, I was, I, I was calm 'cause I was prepared, but for whatever the outcome or whatever they, they shared with me. And I didn't say a whole lot initially. And, um, Dr. Del Sim said, you know, "I know that you might be in shock, but, um, and that's understandable. Um, but you can do one of two things. You can resign or we can have a hearing." And she slid a resignation paper over in front of me and, um, just said, "This is the resignation form." And, you know, "If you have any questions before you sign it or fill it out, that, um, you know, you could make sure that you, you know, seek your own legal counsel to consult with them or I could contact Mr. Hadley, um, if I had any questions about that resignation." And she took a business card of his or had his name on it with his cellphone number and placed it right on top of the resignation paper. And at that point, I'm thinking, for one, I thought I was being put on leave for this reason. They investigated, they investigated it and that wasn't anything that I was investigated for. And now they said that I'm gonna be terminated. And I didn't know, I, I, I was in the dark. So I'm like, I slid the business, I slid Mr. Hatley's phone number over to my MSTA rep and I slid the resignation form back to Dr. Del Sim and I said, "I'm not gonna be needing that." And she said, "Okay, well, that's, that's fine. We're gonna have to have a public hearing then. And it's gonna be in front of the public. And there's gonna be a lot of people. And there's gonna be a lot of people interested in it. There's got, gonna be news, news cameras. And it's gonna be in front of the board, Joe. And Joe, we, I don't know if you know this, but we livestream our, our board meetings. I don't know if it's gonna be livestreamed, but we'll see. It may, it may not be, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be livestreamed." I'm like, "Okay." And I said, "Uh, where are my written charges? What am, what am I being terminated for?" And she said, "Well, um, I don't know yet. That's something for our attorney to draft up and something for him to, to figure out." And I said, "Okay." I said, "Of the six reasons that you can fire a tenured teacher, which reason are you using to terminate me?" And she said she was unsure. Again, that was something for the attorney to, um, to, you know, work up or, she didn't say work up that time, but... And, um, at that point, um, my MSTA rep stepped in and said, uh, and asked, um, well, actually, that, that's not, that's not exactly what happened. Um, let me back up. Um, after she talked about the public hearing and I said, "Okay," then Dr. Carlson said that, um, "But if you resign, this termination doesn't go in your personnel file." And I looked at him and I said, "If I resign, I submit my guilt. I did nothing wrong. I did what I was told to do and how I was told to do it. And I didn't call anyone by the N-word." And then that's when, um, I asked about my written charges. And then I asked about which reason they were gonna terminate me by. And then, then at that point, Mr. Brooks said, "Which policies are we covering here? Which policies are involved?" And then Dr. Carlson said, "Policy GBCB, I believe." And then Dr. Del Sim repeated it. And then Dr. Carlson and, and Mr. Brooks, um, conversed over the other policies that were involved. And, uh, then Mr. Brooks wanted to, wanted to get something on the record. And he said, "I, you know, I'm, I'm, I wanna say this. Um, and I might offend some people in here. I don't mean to." But, um, you know, he said, "You two and I, we've been through these meetings before where, you know, the event that happened, um, and, and as a result of that, the teacher's in this situation and, and it's pretty accurate." But he said, "This is an impeccable teacher with an excellent record of twenty-seven years in this district. And you guys go right to punitive termination instead of some type of, um, resolution where you can get people together and, and figure out what happened." Um, because at that point, I didn't know what happened. I mean, they didn't tell me specifically with, with specificity and, and, uh, you know, details why I was being terminated. I, I had no idea. And, I mean, for me, I mean, being a teacher is, I mean, that's, that's just, that's me. And now they're saying, you know, "You're not gonna be a teacher anymore in this community that I've been in for twenty-seven years and have taught and coached thousands, thousands of young people." So, at that point, um, Mr. Brooks just asked if we could have, uh, a room to process. And Dr. Del Sim said, "Sure, you can have this room as long as you need it," and she left.
You never did learn that day what the charges were, did you?
No, I did ask, um, at some point in there. And Dr. Carlson said, probably Monday, and Dr. Del Sim said, agreed. Um, so, that was the twenty-first. So I anticipated and get him on the twenty-fourth, but I didn't receive anything till the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth.
Did Dr. Carlson tell you that in his report, that he'd reached the conclusion that your conduct was not this AC violation? Had you even heard the term you're being investigated under AC?
No, because I didn't see any of these reports until they were sent to you.
Did he tell you that he had recommended simply some type of discipline, but not termination in training?
No, um, really, Dr. Del Sim was the lead on that twenty-first meeting.
Well, did she tell you that Dr. Carlson had recommended that and that she concurred with it?
No. First thing she said was that we concluded our investigation and we're gonna move to termination. That's exactly what she said.
After all this, do you still wanna teach in this district?
Honestly, yes. I do.
If it's the administration's policy that you don't repeat out loud or say a racial slur, do you have any problem in following that policy?
Absolutely not. I mean, you know, as a teacher, you know, twenty-nine years, twenty-seven years in this district, I think, you know, we have to be open to always learning and, you know, just continuing to learn and do better, be better. I mean, as a teacher, if you have a bad lesson and it doesn't go very well, what do you do? You evaluate and you improve it and you make it better for the next time. As a coach, if the game doesn't go very well, um, what do you do? You, you analyze it, you, you, um, you know, you, you figure out where you can improve and you, you know, learn and make it better the next time. So, um, I, I'm sure, I mean, whatever the policy, whatever the expectation is, I would do that. I don't think I've ever not done what is required of me in my professional responsibilities in this district, ever. And that's...
Well, I heard three young men that are seated behind you testify tonight. And I think you understand diversity. But you're willing, if they think you need that training, you'll take it. You're not telling them no to anything, are you?
No. I mean, I, I, I understand diversity. I think it's very important. I think, you know, I think it's necessary. You know, it's, 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 this, this experience, um, has been a painful one. Uh, it's been a learning one. And, um, you know, it's also, um, it's also made me realize that I've impacted a lot of kids in this, in this community. Um, I've touched a lot of people. Um, just hundreds and thousands of people that have, you know, reached out or said some kind of words about me and I mean, that's, that's humbling to know what people think of me. It, it, it's almost indescribable. But I'd give that all back not to go through this, not to go through what I've been through. Because it, it, it's not fun. And, um, you know, when your reputation is challenged and your character is challenged, um, I mean, I'm, I'm a school teacher. We don't make a lot of money. Um, you know, we have one thing. We have, you know, our reputation and our character on how we handle kids, how we deal with kids, how we mold kids, how we connect with kids, how we learn how to help kids. And when I was working with student A, in no way was I trying to harm her. I understand, I realize that just hearing that word can be harmful. But my intention was one of learning that what she did and the environment, the, the, the school environment that, that she, um, interrupted by yelling, what she yelled, um, was not right. And I wanted to understand that so that she could do better in, in the future. The next day, the next week in eighth grade. And I don't know, I just, that's just, it's, it's, this has been very, very painful. Um, um, and, you know, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, you know, if there's areas I can get better at, then I'll do it. But I, I think the biggest thing I've learned is the disconnect between different levels in this district. Central office wants this done, the building, they're not sure. The building wants this done. The teachers don't actually know what the administration wants. And when we constantly learn or we have to learn by mistake or by something's done wrong, so we've got to correct it, then we're not putting our best foot forward as a district. Dr. Buck, if you don't want me or you don't want our teachers using those, or even writing those words down, then tell us. Because before you came here, that was the expectation. You know, if, if you don't want us saying that word ever, it's a repulsive word, repulsive. I would never say that word towards anyone. Nor have I. But if you don't want that word said, if you don't want it in a movie in, in 10th grade history class, if you don't want it in a book in 7th grade literature class or, or language arts class, then that's, that, that's a goal that we should have. But we have to know it. I mean, do I know that that word is a racial slur? Yes, I know it's a racial slur. I wasn't using the word to call somebody that. Is, is it a slur if I, if I use it to, in, in the sense of not calling someone that? She used it in a declarative sentence. She was declaring something. I used it in an interrogative sentence, a question, to find out if what I heard was correct. That's what I know. I'm sorry, I, maybe I didn't answer your question. I don't even know what it was now.
Well, to tell you that you have, I have no other questions.
Okay, at, at this time and Ms. Basie, I just know from a couple of people asking me that there needs to be a very quick break and we will come right back, um, for the cross-examination because there are some people who need to use the restroom very, very quickly. Five minutes, please, five minutes and then be right back.
Um, you go into a meeting called by Human Resources.
If you could just answer-
I, I need to, I need to expand to, if you would, please, Mr. Murdock.
I simply was asking if you, and I, and correct me if I, if I mischaracterize your testimony. What I heard you say was that you did not understand, um, at that meeting, what were the basis of the charges?
There were no charges presented to me.
That you did not understand what the facts were that they were talking about?
No, because I assumed I was going to be put on administrative leave for one incident. And when I got to the interview, I was not asked at all about any type of situation where I addressed another student with the N-word.
And what interview are you referring to?
Dr. Carlson's interview on the 12th.
When we sit here today, do you disagree with the facts that form the basis of the charges?
Your first question to me was about the meeting on the 21st.
Which you had not answered, so now I'm asking another question, trying to get, get to it, get to an answer.
Okay.
As you sit here tonight, do you disagree with the facts that form the basis of the charges?
Do I disagree with the-
The form of the question in that it calls for a legal conclusion as to what facts she's referring to.
Well, if we can turn to page two. Exhibit two.
Sure. Okay, I'm there.
Paragraph two, that starts the specific reason for my recommendation for termination is that on May 6, 2021, you overheard a black student use a racial slur when speaking to another student. You escorted the student who uttered the slur to the office and wrote up a discipline slip which quoted the student while in the presence of another black student. You then asked the student you were referring for discipline whether she said the words you overheard. But instead of showing her what you had written on the discipline slip or otherwise asking her to confirm her statement, in a discreet manner, you read the statement loud enough for the other student to hear. When the female student did not immediately confirm she had made the statement, you said it again aloud. Do you disagree with those facts?
Um, somewhat.
Can you turn to exhibit one, please?
Okay.
Have you seen this document before?
Yes.
This is the joint stipulation of facts. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you look at paragraph 25, says the recommendation is based on your use of the N-word twice as you repeated what student A said in the mezzanine and what you reported on the green slip. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as you sit here today, you still agree with those facts. Is that correct?
Yes, as it's written here, yes.
Do you a, agree that the N-word is offensive?
It's an offensive word, yes.
Do you agree that the N-word is a racial slur?
It's a racial slur if you use it towards somebody in a, in a derogatory, demeaning, discriminatory way, yes.
And you agree that you said the N-word, repeating what A had said?
I read the N-word.
Orally out loud?
In a discreet manner.
But you read the N-word orally out loud, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you aware that student A has asked that you not escort her anymore?
Yes, I was, I was told that.
Are you aware that Mr. H has asked that you not be around his son anymore?
Um, maybe if it was in a report. I mean.
I have no further questions.
Mr. McDorman?
No redirect.
Board members, if you have any questions for this particular witness. Board member Hedrick?
Thank you. I, I do have several questions. Um, could I direct you to exhibit X, I believe? It's a, a picture and I assume this is the student administration, uh, office? Would that be a correct assumption?
That's correct.
Okay, um, could you, um, basically-
Hang on just a second, Dr. Hedrick.
Sorry.
Um, exhibit X is not-
I was going to say objection. It's not been entered into evidence that there's been no testimony about it.
Right. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but yeah.
Okay, well, then I guess I can't answer, ask that question. Um, let me, um, ask another question. Um, excuse me, I have to find my notes here. Uh, could you tell us if, uh, you were in the student administrative office anytime alone with the other student at any time?
No. I was never alone. I, I wouldn't process a student alone, uh, Ms. Hedrick, um, you know.
I meant the student, not the student you were processing, the other student that was in-
No, there was always a secretary in the room.
Thank you. Um.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
When you were escorting, uh, student A, um, to her, uh, Mrs. Marks, Ms. Marks' class after, um, you had finished at the student administration, um, did you, do you recall any conversation that you had with her, her on the way to her next class?
No, there, there was no conversation. I mean, she was following me. I kind of went out the door a little bit ahead of her. She was still trying to gather her Chromebook and books.
Okay.
Um.
And, and so you did, did you notice any or pick up any changes in her demeanor or, um, as you were, uh, taking her to her class?
No, um, I, I didn't. Um, I did kind of see her out of the corner of my eye when I was addressing the teacher, trying to distract, if you will, the class. And I kind of saw her take her seat over to my left. And I knew that she was in her seat and, and that's when I kind of knew to, to leave the room.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Hedrick? Okay. Board member Sparks?
Hello. Um, the first question that I have is, um, at what point, I know that you stated, um, this, and so I'm curious to know, at what point did you learn that using the N-word was harmful? Because you stated that the N-word is a harmful word. And you actually, I believe you stated that you, you've come to learn that it's a harmful word. And so I want to know at what point did you learn that that was a harmful word?
Well, I mean, I, the N-word is, it, it's probably the worst word we, we have in our language. And, um, I think the part of my testimony that I think you're referring to is when I said, "I've learned that even just hearing the word, even in the context I was using it in, reading back her words, could be harmful." And, um, I've done a lot of reflection, a lot of reflecting, um, over this time period. Um, the first person that called me when I was on leave because they said, "Don't talk to anybody," and I was trying to, I mean, I, I'm a rule follower. I mean, I am. I just, and, you know, my wife thinks I'm boring because of that, but I'm a rule follower. And I was trying not to talk to anybody. And the first person that called me was Coach Parks. And, um, he just left me a voicemail. I didn't answer. He left me a voicemail and, um, over these last three weeks, I've talked to a lot of people and the people I've talked to, you know, I've talked to these boys back here. I've talked to Mr. Wright. I've talked to a, a Lee Summit High School grad named Dalton Van for about two hours about this topic. And, um, you know, I, I've talked to my family members, um, you know, because the way I was raised, that word wasn't even, I mean, we, it wasn't even discussed. I mean, because that, that, that's not who we are, you know, in my family. And so, um, uh, I haven't been around that word very often at all. Um, and, but in the hallways in this district and, and we're, we're not immune. This has happened all over the country. But in the hallways in our school, in the locker rooms, on the football field, this word's being used. Not by staff, but by, by the students. And what I, you know, what I'm concerned about is when I feel like I was doing what I was told to do and how I was told to do it, and now I'm getting terminated, what are teachers going to do? They're going to avoid it. Our students use this word. Teachers aren't, they're not going to touch it. 27 years in this community? And, and I get terminated or recommended, recommended for termination and teachers aren't, I mean, they're not going to address this now. And so I think what I've learned is, and like I said, this just isn't Lee Summit, but, but we have a lot of pride in this community and I think we can make change. And we, you know, we've kind of gone that way and then we back up and we go a little bit further and we back up. And I know it's a complex issue. And I know it's a complex issue on how to move forward because there's a lot of bits, there's a lot of pieces to it. But, you know, to answer your question, Mr. Sparks, I, the word's always been harmful. I've never used it. I've never personally been called it, but I've realized that just hearing it, maybe in the context that I used it in, could be harmful. I don't know if that that answers your question, but this word's in music that kids listen to. It's on social media, they spell it out. I mean, it's, it's a prevalent word. And um, and you know, I don't know how we eliminate it completely. I don't even know if we can, but I think we have to do a better job of understanding that maybe we set the example as teachers through curriculum, through processing, even writing it down, whatever. But I think we can, I think we can get better.
You just brought up something that actually posed another question for me, and then I'll get back to the other questions that I have. In the regards to music, if a student, and I'm using the word if because you also stated that this word is used often in our buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if a student is listening to a song and is singing the song and happens to say a racial slur, would you discipline that student?
Yes.
Okay, and in what context are you disciplining the student with them singing a song?
Well, they spoke a word.
Because they spoke the word.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I will preface that by saying that when, when we when we have like music days in, in in PE, you know, where we're allowed to have music when we're exercising or whatever, you know, I specifically tell them, I mean, I've never had anybody sing the word in class, so I mean, I can't tell you that, you know, I just don't know what I would do because I've never had that happen because I tell them that you know, if they play music and I hear inappropriate language, you know, I'm gonna, you know, discipline them. So, you know, I tell them that if I hear the bad music or whatever, then, you know, then I'm gonna address it. But it's played at basketball games, it's played at football games, you know, pre-game, this and that. And sometimes, maybe, you know, they think it's the clean version of the song or whatever, but it's not appropriate. It's not appropriate to the patrons waiting for the game to start. It's not appropriate for the pla- Someone mentioned I rep basketball. It just doesn't happen at Lee Summit. You know, and I'll be waiting for the game to start, and I'll hear a word, and I'm like, ooh, someone didn't clean that CD up or whatever. And you know, it's, it's um, I think in the context I was using it, it was like, to me, it was an educational process. And I was just trying to make sure that I didn't accuse someone of saying this word when I believe that's what she said. Continue.
You stated that this process and this has been painful, correct?
Yes.
Do you know if this process has been painful for the students that was involved?
No, I don't know.
No, you don't know if it was painful?
I mean, it could have been. I haven't spoken to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Did the, did the student say that she was shocked of hearing a white teacher
Yes.
say this derogatory, or please correct me on whatever the term was that she stated, that it shocked her?
Yes, I mean, I don't know what that, I don't know what shock meant to her. She's 13 years old. I don't know.
Okay.
Surprised, sometimes funny, I don't know. Sometimes they can laugh as a response, and maybe later they kind of get the feeling like, maybe that wasn't right. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't talk to her.
But she did ultimately, she did not want you to be her escort. You did learn of that.
Yes.
And then the one last question that I have is, did you apologize or have an opportunity to apologize to either student?
I did, I did not have an opportunity to apologize. I think that's what my, my teacher union rep was referring to, you know. You know, could we process it and, you know, come to an understanding among all parties involved, but.
Did, do you feel like you owe an apology?
Absolutely.
Why?
Because of what I read in the report.
Thank you.
Board member Fritchy?
Yes, just one question, Mr. Oswald. We've heard in the testimony that the other student and stat's parent sent an email regarding this situation, and we have that artifact here in front of us. Did you receive any communication from student A's parent regarding this incident or any concerns regarding this incident?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Board member Allen?
Thank you. President Murdock, Mr. Oswald, just, I'm trying to form a question here because it seemed like we were back and forth on a couple of dates, or you've referenced a couple of different dates, like a call from Dr. Del Sam on May 19th. Then I think you had the in-person meeting, May 21st. Is that?
Yes, sir. That was a Wednesday, the 19th. She called me, wanted to meet on the 21st at 9:00 AM.
Okay, and then a couple of times you've said that you were, and I don't mean to, I think I have a caffeine headache going on here, so I'm trying to get the words right, but I don't know that you said confused, but there was the issue of not feeling like or understanding that you knew exactly what the board policy was broken or exactly what the situation was, whether you offended student JH, I think it is, or student A. But yet I go back to a letter that was sent May 12th. On the 12th, that was more about administrative leave. And that, I'm sorry, that's under tab three in the book. So that specifically mentions administrative leave, and it does mention GCPD and GCPD AP. But even with this letter, was it clear why the phone call happened on the 19th? Or why you were even in the conversation on the 21st?
I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little confused as to what you're asking.
Well, okay, so May 12th, here's a letter sent to you, right? And it says, "Board policies related to the administrative leave, GCPD and related." Oh, it's not in evidence. Number three is not?
No, it's not. I was, in fact, I was just writing a note to the board president to remind him that we need to go through the admitted exhibits.
I mean, I'll talk to you about any dates that you want.
Well, I guess part of it, then ultimately, here's my final analysis, I guess, then, and the question is, when did you feel confident or understand completely why termination was, was basically handed to you or resignation? Where, on the 19th to 21st, after that, where, where did it all hit you that said it's either resignation or termination?
Okay, I'm gonna try to answer that. I learned either resignation or termination on the 21st.
Okay.
I learned my, what my written charges were with particularity when I received them from Dr. Buck, when he had them here, I think Mr. Hatley drew them up, I think if I'm correct, on the, on the 27th? Is that a Thursday, May 27th? And I was supposed to pick them up on May 28th, I think is a Friday. That was a holiday weekend, and somehow, unbeknownst to me, my MST A Legal Counsel in Columbia got them through email before I even came to pick them up. So I, I mean, I didn't release that, but regardless of the fact, that person sent them to me, so then there was no reason for me to come pick them up. So I don't know if I answered your question, but when did I actually know what was all going on when I got all the stuff from my attorney? And I got to read all the reports?
Okay.
That's when I actually figured out what happened.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Board member Marshall?
Thank you. I have a few questions, yes or no questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I understand you to say that you didn't become aware to the harm using the N-word with a student until this incident?
Which incident are you referring to?
The incident that has us here this evening with student A.
With student A. Repeat that question for me, please.
Do I understand you to say that you didn't become aware of the harm using the N-word until this incident?
I mean, it's, it's, it can be a harmful word. There's, there's no question about it.
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Prior to this incident?
I'm still not clear on what exactly your, your, this has, this has been a harmful word ever since it began.
Next question I have is, do you believe that the regular use of the N-word by some students gives teachers, teachers the permission to use that word?
No. I mean, no.
Okay, thank you. Have you ever heard any of your athletes using the N-word during practices or warmups or games?
Not these guys, but I've heard other athletes.
Have you ever heard that being used in your presence?
Yes.
Did you ever take actions with those specific athletes similar to what you did in this incident?
Yes.
You mentioned, let's see, this is in exhibit Romeo, page, exhibit R. The second page of exhibit R. In the first paragraph, you stated, "I was not addressed-"
This is not in evidence.
It's not. Is it same exhibit four? Okay. What I was referring to is also in exhibit four, so I was just made aware.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
No, no, thank you, because I didn't know they didn't have that. In that exhibit, it stated that you were not addressing the other student that was in the office at the time. You stated also this evening that you had asked the other student about their cellphone. Is there a reason why you asked the other student in there about their cellphone?
Yes, when I turned in the green slip, the secretary was addressing the other student in the corner, study carol, about a cellphone, and he, and she, the secretary, asked the other student to bring it up to her or bring it up to her desk. And so I was just kind of going over to make sure that, I was just gonna, you know, either help him get it there or make sure he had it put away.
And my final question for you-
Yes, ma'am.
If you, you feel you owe the student an apology, why do you feel you owe the student an apology if you believe you were doing your job?
Well, in the course of doing my job, the way I thought I was supposed to do it, I harmed her or him. And so if I take ownership in that. So, you know, teaching is human interaction, and it's not gonna be perfect. It's not. And no matter how well we do our job, we can make mistakes. And, you know, I mean, I've always taken ownership in anything, in a classroom. If I failed to tell my student something and they didn't succeed as well as they, they should have, I told them, it's my mistake. If we didn't anticipate something happening in a game, hey, that's my bad. I didn't cover that in practice. You know, here's how we're gonna handle that. So, I mean, teaching's human interaction, and it's not gonna be perfect, so if I make a mistake or if I don't do it correctly, then I'm gonna correct it myself. I'm not gonna rely on somebody else to.
Did you apologize for reading back the N-word to your other students when you read it back to them in the past reports that you have done, as you just stated?
I'm not sure I've ever had to do that, not, not with a racial slur. I mean, I have with certain other profanity.
Well, just to clarify, because when I asked the question about the N-word specifically being used in your presence with athletes, you said yes. And then I asked you, had you followed the same procedures with those athletes, you said yes.
I think you-
My follow-up question to that is, did you apologize to those athletes for using that word in their, in their presence? Did you feel you needed to apologize?
Well, I believe your question was, did I address it?
No, that was not my question.
Audience, please.
Can, can you read it back for me, please?
Well, why, why don't we just have her ask a question straight, just ask the question, answer the question, because reporters are gonna have to go back many, many pages in the transcript at this point. So you can continue to ask your question and just try to answer it to the best of your ability.
Okay, I mean.
When the N-word was used in your presence with previous athletes?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you respond the same way you did in this incident?
No, I mean, I didn't write up a discipline referral. I went and addressed it, told them, "We're not gonna use that word on the football field or whatever," and, you know, usually there was some other type of consequence. It wasn't handled through Student Administration.
Is there a reason why it wasn't, was not handled through?
Um, I think usually what happens is administrators respect the decisions of the coaches or the, you know, the sponsors, and they just expect them to make sure that our students are making good choices and make sure that our students understand what they can and cannot do as far as language in, in that arena. And, you know, we kind of handle it ourselves, and you know, it, it's not gonna take an administrator real long to, to realize that if you don't handle it, it's gonna get out of control, and it's not gonna be a good reflection of your school or school district, so in the athletic realm, we usually just kind of handle it out there on the field or on the court or something like that. We don't go through the administration process after school hours.